I would like to call the recomined of the Gates County Board of Commissioners to order. We'll begin with the draft by Commissioner Jordan Nuttman.
Father, we come this morning to thank you for all of your blessings, for goodness and mercy and grace. And Father, we just thank you this morning for the honor to come out and conduct the business of the county. And we ask your order of blessings and wisdom and guidance that all things will be done be a blessing to the citizens of this county. We thank you for our nation, Lord, and we thank you for our state. We thank you for our county, and we thank you for every blessing that you restore from us. And we give this thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
Our flag of allegiance, the flag of the United States of America, and to a mother for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to approve the minutes for the December 1st, 2014. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, did I hear a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Affirmative.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved as written. Okay, adjustments to the agenda. There are recently several added under new business. We need to add number 15, application for an EIC block grant. And number 16, a budget item about the extension director hiring. I think there's been a discussion with the director, regional director, and we need to discuss that. So items 15 and 16. Is there anything else that we need to add? Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
It's a number of seconds.
Motion has been made, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved as adjusted. We'll move along to delegations. We have the unannounced delegations. And the first one on that is Sheriff Edwell and Ray Campbell. We have a tag team this morning.
Yes, ma'am. We're both coming in. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. First, we're going to do this specification real quick, quickly, and it's something that Ray is very, very passionate about, and we have discussed this. This is something that I brought before you all in the past. Now, I've heard this exact before, but something we're looking at is very dear to us. Let Ray go in a little bit there, but just going to give a little quick synopsis. We have got a problem in front of the high school and the middle school early in the mornings and late in the afternoons with traffic. And we have had a lot of near misses and a lot of accidents that sort of occur early in the morning, especially dropping off kids in the middle school. And a lot of traffic in the afternoon, kids leaving out of the high school. And we wanted to come in and speak to you all and maybe try to get you all some lessons to maybe, I know that you all can approve it, but see if I may, see if we can get DOT to come in and do a study on some possibilities, either some stoplights or caution lights east and west of each one of these school intersections because it's getting very, very dangerous out there. With the assistance of Officer Campbell, we have been able to put an officer actually out there directing traffic to help the buses get out of the middle school as we've been doing all along with the high school. And we have had a lot of near misses on bus where we are almost getting clipped by cars not paying attention to the traffic and not paying attention to the school zones. And we're coming, well, that Ray, Ray's got a little few more statistics he can speak to you about, but we're basically just coming and asking you all some lessons to see if we can get maybe a letter from you all and support from the commissioners to see if I can get a part of transportation, come in, maybe do a traffic study. At the minimum, at the minimum, maybe some of the flashing speed limit signs that flash through the phone type thing, we can get the state to put those in, or the caution lights, or eventually it would be nice to have a stoplight. The intersection there with the live area, the community center, and the bank all meet right here together. If you all don't ride that area, you'll realize that there is not a turn lane coming from Gatesville going into that commerce center. That's something that we need to address as well. We're having a lot of close misses and hits there, just not for that. Combine that with traffic to the high school, it's very dangerous. I'm with Officer Campbell.
It's one of my jobs to do out there in Central. It's helping the buses get off the campus and the high school buses get back on in the afternoon. Basically, they track a nightmare out there. And I'm sitting out there in the road, and I'm pretty much just sitting duck, and people don't pay attention. I've had some close calls out there. What's happening is you got people coming down 158 traveling east. They're coming down a long straightaway, running up in a school zone. That's 45 school, 45 mile an hour speed limit is only, you know, in force, the recorders on it is from 7.25 to 1.830, 2.30, 3.30. Other than that, it's 55. Well, that's all fine and good, but you got people running, you know, they're running 60 mile an hour when they hit to that 45. That puts them in the school zone and running 50, 55 in miles per second. I've been up there and had almost a head-on collision over the length of this courtroom for me when they hit together. Turbo side, turbo same. I had a nose right there yesterday, almost a bad rear end. People running too fast coming up into that school zone. If we had something similar to the caution light that would flash, those people coming down 158 could see for half a mile and would have lurked in the stalks all day before they hit to 45, not after they already were. That's what caused them. It's just, it's, it's a traffic, a nightmare. People pulling out, people pulling across, and you got two-way traffic out here and one kid. And I'm sitting out there in the middle of trying to slow people down.
We have, we have, we've got extra effort. These guys are working the traffic zone most of the mornings with the radar. We've got the troopers working, helping us work this. This is something that first order of warrant is very much aware of because the guys have been asked to try to help us out there, and they're doing what they can, but it's just something that we need to do a little help, maybe a little extra help from you all to see if maybe we can get Department of Transportation to consider some type of study, to look into it. As I said, something simple with caution lights or some type of flashing, you know, the school zone ahead, speed limit down, such and such, and we plenty of advance. And not just going to leave Central and, and the high school would like to hang too. Ms. Hopler, Mr. Jordan from over around Sunbury, here's T.S. Cooper's just as bad. T.S. Cooper's got that long stretch coming from Honesville. As he's mentioned, we've got people running 55, 60 miles an hour, also boom, they're in a 45 zone, and we've had some near misses there as well. It's not quite as congested because we've got a long driveway, we get trapped off the roadway, but that's another area that we need to look at as well. And if we go ahead and do it now, we might as well go ahead and maybe make a pitch for all the schools to try to help some of them. None of them really have any other type of warning. As I said, Buckland right now, they're basically, you know, they get buses in off the campus, but of course they're not as quite as congested as you are with the middle school and the high school students getting dropped off, and of course, the high school students driving. So we're just coming to you to ask y'all's consideration, to see what you all can do. We'll be glad to give you any information. We'd be glad to sit, we have to go sit and count cars. We'll do that for you if we need to, but we're just trying to get y'all's support so we can get some help for the kids and the safety as well, being a few from the need.
Ray, do I, do I recall, you and I had a conversation, I believe, about this, and do you have some experience with Bertie County?
It was a whip ball game, and that was the first thing I saw when I came up through the school because we're getting hit by that sound with a huge yellow flashing caution light. And that is so nice to alert people, but that's a big highway out there. And I said, you can see the thing from great distance, you know, it's a, it's a tremendous high, I guess.
Also, Chippewa there's on Highway 32 going into Chillicothe County, that big elementary school on the left, whether they have, they have a few flashing lights out there.
We all familiar with this. What we're looking at, something that we can, you know, can be put out there that automatically set and catches your eye, you know? We can go out there, stand out there with a beautiful monitor, a blue light flashing, and it'll slow down long enough to get around us, but as soon as it did, it puts right back in. And if we could give them a little bit more notice, it'll be a big help. And as you all know, not everybody that comes through there every morning is from Gates County, is familiar with what's going on, and it can be a dangerous, very dangerous intersection. And those of you that have had children, I know Jack, you have, and some of you just went back and forth, they grew up here in the area. And I know Ms. Hopler, bless her heart, she's been in and out of that high school many a time, wondering how and where she got in and out of it sometimes, it's a traffic epidemic. All we're doing is asking for y'all's support and consideration to maybe address a letter to the Department of Transportation here in this district and get somebody from maybe Traffic Engineer Division to come in. As I said, if it means us sitting down to count cars one afternoon or for a couple of days there to see what you, we'll, we'll do whatever we can to help you. If there's something we're concerned about, the safety of the kids.
Mr. Chairman, I'd suggest that we task the county manager to give the Sheriff's Department a letter requesting from Department of Transportation just what you presented to us and have it available for us to sign for the next week and have it submitted. So, and, you know, and in proper order, I'd make that motion and do that.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Oh, sorry.
Got it. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Certainly, I'm well aware of the problems at the high school and also the intersection with Credity and the White World. That's very dangerous as well. And Cooper, you know, has a long blockway. A lot of parents pick up and let off their children, and they are on 32 waiting. And we have a lot of trucks on 32, and it's a, that's a very dangerous area as well.
Well, as I said, I'm not trying to, like I said, just eat at Gates or Buckland either because they're, they're just, you know, just here there. We work the Gatesville area here right regular, and we would get out and write every ticket that we do. And I look at a lot of my systems out here, everybody, including myself, been caught. You can slip through there and not realize you're in a school zone because you're concentrating on everything going around you, the Dollar General and all that and everything. You're concentrating on 101 things, and it's a 25 mile speed zone, and anybody can land standing anytime you're on 35, 40 mile an hour and don't realize it. And like I said, these guys do a good job. If you see us out here with the lights spinning early in the morning, even one of the Mustangs, that's what they're doing, they're working in the school zones, and we're trying to slow those things down. So like I said, that's all we just asking y'all's consideration.
Okay, motion is on the floor. It's been properly seconded. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So, I believe that is all that we're on the unannounced. We do have a Knights delegation. Dr. Dine Meyer, the president of the College of Alamo, is here today. We welcome you to Gates County, and we are interested to hear what you have to say.
Yes, well, my annual visit just to say thank you for your continued support. I have just a couple of things I thought I would share this morning, and I know you have a very lengthy agenda, so I will not take much of your time. So, welcome to Natalie. I think this is my first official meeting with her at the helm. She was with us a few weeks ago, which I'll talk about in just a minute at our strategic planning session. I hope she, if she has not, she will share what she got out of that in a minute. But I do bring greetings on behalf of the faculty and the staff, but most important myself and the Board of Trustees, and just thank you for your continued support of the college. We have a lot going on, and I hope in August that each of you received, and I know Natalie did that, you should have received from me back in August, one of these kind of recaps over the last four and a half years of all that we've been accomplishing. And I hope as you flip through that and it landed on your door, as we were getting the false news rather away, I hope that you were quite pleased and amazed at everything that we had been striving toward over the last four and a half years. I must tell you, we've been extremely busy, and it has been like a shotgun blast. We've been in all kinds of directions, doing all kinds of things, and I think we've accomplished a lot. So one of the things that we did a few weeks ago, or actually back in November, you received an invitation from us. I know at least one of you called and said you had somewhere else you had to be that day and could not have joined us, but Natalie did. So we did five strategic planning sessions throughout the region, across our four campuses, over the seven counties, and had over 80-plus community stakeholders come to those sessions. And we spent a couple of hours talking about some of the things that we've accomplished over the last four or five years, but really what we've accomplished over the last 53. And talked a lot about being very intentional over the next three to five years about what we're going to be doing to reach the citizens who are underemployed, unemployed, those that are coming out of our high schools, and really digging very deeply into some of the strategies we can around development workforce spending. So Natalie, as I said, came and spent two or three hours with us and gave us a lot of great feedback at the Elizabeth City session that she was in. That's probably the heaven, the most heavily attended session that we had. So I think it was a good framework for, for getting information. So I'm going to talk a little bit about that process because it's really important, I think, for your citizens and for where the college is headed. We then took all the data that we gathered over those stakeholder sessions in November and December, and we had those same sessions with our faculty and staff on Monday as we recorded back for convocation and getting ready to start the semester this week for, for our spring semester. So we had another 200-plus individuals kind of really examine what we've been doing and where we're headed. We will present our findings and some new strategic directives to our Board of Trustees, hopefully no later than April, so that over the summer we can kind of get together a marketing plan of what we're going to be doing. And we will begin announcing that to our constituent groups such as yourself and your citizens, and we will get about that new body of work, as I've kind of said, over the next three to five years. So we are hopeful that you will come alongside of us and continue to be as supportive as you have and really look to us to do some, continue to do some great work. I was speaking to your chairwoman before the meeting started, and she mentioned to me that a number of your students from the high school are traveling over, doing welding during the day, several days a week. And that is a program that we've put a lot of resources towards the last few months. In fact, our new lab is just now open, or will on Thursday, and we will have a ribbon cutting, and I'm sure Natalie will get an invitation to that. So we've made about a $300,000 investment in that new welding lab, and so your students really should be getting an even better experience this semester if they continue their coursework in that. So I hope that you know that we have been up to a lot. You have your enrollment numbers, and I won't speak to those a lot. I'll leave those with you. I generally bring them with you. I think your clerk asked me next time, would you bring them electronically? I said, sure, I'd be glad to do that. That would be great for us. So, but I know sometimes you'd like to have them and phone through them. Enrollment is steady. It is down a little bit across the campus, but that's unfortunately pretty typical across the community colleges in North Carolina right now, mostly because some of the economy is turning. But I must tell you, as we talked about in the session that Natalie was at, we are not resting on that. That's not the laurel that we want to rest upon. We know that we have a lot of citizens who are living in poverty, as I said, who are underemployed and unemployed in many of our service, or in our counties and our service area, and so we're very committed to trying to figure out how to reach those individuals in new ways, and we talked a lot about that in terms of marketing and getting out. So I also wanted to mention to you, over the last year or so, we've had the superintendents on campus at least once. They'll be back on campus at the end of this month, and we have really been having a lot of conversations about, with your high school principals and your counselors, they were on campus back in October, about the programs that we're offering through the high school career college promise. And so I think we'd be very proud, as I said, of what we've been doing. So I hope you enjoy the materials. I sent you in August, you have your enrollment numbers before you. But I'll answer any question you may have, but I really did really just come to bring you good news and to say thank you and ask you for your continued support and hope again that you enjoy the information that you got and that you're proud of your community college. I know with four campuses, sometimes in Gates, it seems maybe we're a little disconnected, but we have our eye on you. We are working with your students and your citizens and trying to come up with new ways to reach them. So it's always nice to come, at least once a year, and remind you that we're, we're doing that, but also hearing constructive feedback you might have. So thank you for having me this morning.
Well, thank you for coming. Does anyone have any comments?
I'll deal with Eliot. Do you all have any co-op programs at COA?
We do. In fact, Mr. Jordan, you and I have been at this a long time together. It sounds like we used to call it co-op, right? Years and years ago. Recently, the system changed the language to what we call work-based learning experiences. And we do, and we do that through some of our medical fields. We do that in aviation. We do that in welding. We can do that in a number of ways. And if there is an industry that has a need, certainly we have worked with Hofstra Flow and some others who had some specific interests, but we still do that. We have a contact person, her name is Lynn Jennings. But if you ever had a need or if there's a student or someone who would like to get involved, or a community, or a company, let me know. But we still do. We've just changed the language a little bit, changed the requirements a little bit. It's not as heavily involved as, you or I remember where it was, you know, a high level of hours per week, but they do still do a certain amount of hours per semester in order to get embedded in the business and the workplace. And hopefully turn that into a career at that company or in the industry. It can be a paid work-based learning experience and it can be an unpaid. Just depends on what the need of that company is and what they're able to do. But we are always looking for other places to place students.
I think that's a great point.
It is. Trying to convince students in this day and age where technology is in their face and they want to, you know, still work and make money and they have children, and many of our students have families, but to convince them that that work-based learning experience looks great on a resume, but it's a foot in the door before their graduating class. Sometimes it's a little bit more difficult, but I think we've done a pretty good job convincing students. So thank you for the question.
Any other comments?
I would like to ask, is the aviation program expanding into the drone area or?
We have had some conversations. You know, mostly what we do at our new aviation campus in Currituck is, as you may or may not know, is airframe or power plant. So it's the overhauling of aircraft, everything from sheet metal to avionics to electronics. It's basically tearing it down and putting it back together. We have talked to, had some conversations around the drone industry, but that's really a bachelor's level program because most of that is high technology, but somebody has to build it. So I know our aviation director has had some conversations around that and has worked with the gentleman from North Carolina State on a couple of occasions. So it'll, it'll happen, I'm sure, but we're not deep in it right now since our program's still pretty, you know, we're still in our second year. This is our second year. So I'm sure it'll come. I'm sure it'll come.
Okay, thank you. Was Dan coming?
Thank you.
For your service to our students?
Absolutely.
Here in Gates County, certainly education is a way we've opened a lot of doors.
It is. It's the best investment a family can make. So I think that's one of the things that we've been trying to do is get in front of parents so that they understand. And so I appreciate you having me be here today, and I'll see you soon. We're going to have lunch in a couple of weeks, I think, a couple of us. Thank you again. Natalie and I have known each other since I've been here. It's been five years in April I've come to the area, and she's a good person. We've hired a good person, so I look forward to working with her in this team role. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to administrative reports, beginning with our county manager.
This report is from November 24th, December of '18, and as I go through, there will be some updates that I will be providing to this because I do know that you will have some questions about some of them. An offer has been made to someone with payroll as of December 18th. The anticipated start date had not been announced, but the person has accepted, and she will begin work on January 12th. Work on the old historic courthouse began on December the 18th, and I will go ahead and provide an update at this point in time. As you came through Gatesville, you may have noticed that the west wall work has begun. You can see exposed bricks. However, work has stopped on that wall. The Masonry Company feels that it is unsafe to continue, and James Andreas with Andreas Construction is in agreement. He has submitted some change recommendations to the engineering firm, Clear Skate, and he has also invited them to come down to review the structure now that it's actually exposed. This will increase the cost, but we do not know how much, but we do not know what his final design or what the engineer's final design will look like. However, they have not stopped work. They are continuing to work on the inside, and they are installing the steel beams on the north and south walls. So they are over there today working on the inside. They are also contracted to do work with the Gates County Historical Society on the east wing, so they will be doing that work while they are here as well. Construction at Gates House is proceeding. Forty of the 70 beds will be for those with Alzheimer's, and job applications are being accepted online at meridiansenior.com. Quotes are currently being received for inspection and repair work at the EIC building. Crystal did provide an update yesterday. She is still looking for people who are qualified for the type of work that is needed and who have the proper credentials, and she is having a difficult time locating people to provide beds for that work. Additional lights will be added to the back parking lot behind the administrative building and to the back courthouse parking lot. We met with them, I believe actually Nathan and I, on December the 18th, and located some areas where they will put new lights, since if you left here at 11 o'clock after a commissioners meeting, it is very dark. November the 24th, I met with Chief Stormy Buds and Deputy Chief Zeller regarding the MCACC Medicaid reimbursement program. The contract between Gates County EMS and EMS would need to be approved before EMS can proceed with the application, and this was discussed at the December 1st meeting. Later today, there is an agenda item concerning that contract. I attended the Nisko County Administrative Course in Chapel Hill, December 2nd through the 5th. On a December the 9th, county managers and economic developers attended a meeting sponsored by the Alamo Commission to address where economic development strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats are throughout the area. Vision and mission statements are being drafted, and they will be shared when they are approved. On December the 16th, I attended the planning board to assist with providing information as requested for a text amendment discussion that is also on the agenda later today for a public hearing. And do you have any questions?
December 18th.
Yes, sir.
Did you mean?
Yes, it was. There was a lot of discussion. I believe all 10 counties that are covered by the Alamo Commission were present and either represented by economic developer or, or both. Alamo Commission is dedicated now, since they have a new executive director, to be more focused on economic development, and they want to know what role they need to play, especially with all the changes that have been taking place with what used to be the Northeast Commission, that's Northeast Alliance, and now it's part of the North Carolina East Alliance. So like I said, we did come up with the vision and mission statement. They sent out this draft. A few additional comments were submitted back to Kathy Davidson, and she's incorporating those into that. And once she sends out what we feel like is the final, then I will share them with you.
And it's been scheduled to come before us.
Not currently, but I do know that she is going through trying to make the races to meet the Alamo manager, which she's actually already done. She did meet with me actually, two or three weeks after she began work, and she is wanting to meet with all the commissioners.
I know she has met some of the candidates. Any other?
No questions. I would like to comment that I attended the Alamo Behavioral meeting in Williamson, and that we're going to draft a letter to our county manager stating what the Tier One group is doing. So at some stage, if you haven't received that, you will receive it, and I'll, I'll be with you and share that information.
Okay, thank you.
And I would, Dr. Dine Meyer has laughed, and I perhaps should have mentioned this while she was here, so she would know what a good job the sustainable architectural, excuse me, architectural technology program is doing at COA. Last month, I believe, I sent our own commissioners drafts of architectural plans that some students from COA came, they looked at the administrative building and gave some ideas of how to reconfigure that building so we can get better use of all the space. I'm not sure if I sent to you Commissioner Freeman, that may have been a fore, he came on board, but I will make sure I sent that to you just to give us some thoughts. That is, for free charge, but also earn them a grade as a major test grade. And so if we have other buildings that we need, I know the dean of that program, and I can contact him, he said he'd be more than willing to assist with any other projects, provide ideas, and to give his students some real hands-on work.
Well, it's great to utilize the resources that we have in our region and also the price of the ground. Okay, finance and tax report. Any questions? Probably have to use that to burn that. Would you like to discuss the block box I met us them? I know that's them.
Yes, sir. The contracts have been approved and signed, they executed, and I am just finalizing the works on those and I believe we should have it replaced by the end of January. Is that correct, Diane?
That is correct. We should go live in February. There were some software issues and a good approval of attorney that we put out in the lab for January, but they're offset for those.
And for the people in the ordinance studio, would you like to tell them about what the lock box does?
Your payment will no longer go to Theo Bart's 104 here in Gatesville. They will be going unfortunately to.
Can I add anything?
Oh, sorry.
I couldn't even hear that one.
Unfortunately, the post office barks will no longer be 104 Gatesville. It'll be a post office barks in Pennsylvania because we're dealing where a lock box was southern bank. And so, when the customer mails in their payment, it will not go to Pennsylvania. It will be processed there and immediately, well, the next day, it will be downloaded into our software. So, it frees up the staff of getting three, four hundred envelopes a day when we start mailing in our payments because we have approximately 4,500 customers and a lot of free up time within our staff. We are also implementing, that's our lock box, we're doing an AR box, which is the accounts receivable. And when you do an electronic release with your bank, the banks have previously been mailing in a paper check to us, which takes days to get into us, but this will be instantaneous and it will go to the accounts receivable box and the next day it will come to us. So, it's much faster payment time. And that will also be a speed up in all way right process. But we are hoping to have a much better service for our customers this way and much more conducive for the employees.
Any questions? Have questions?
Yes.
So, when the customer, with this new program, the customer calls and says, hey, I mailed the check or whatever, will we be able to go online here and research that or we have to make a phone call?
No, no. Everything will be available online from the coupon, the stuff that you send in for your payment. We'll be able to view the front side, we'll be able to view the backside, we'll be able to view your check, we'll be able to view the front side and the backside of your check for every single account that we have.
Very good.
Okay. Any more questions?
No, but thank you, but thank you. Seems like that's a step forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Any others? About the finance, the tax report, any money?
Good morning. How's everybody? Little chance to kind of to root through. I guess we've got a few issues here with the tax department, with the collector's report. Any specific questions on that? As we look at December, we look at the total for that, just over 1.6 million or so for that amount of account. I would say we have been working with customer service accepting those check payments down the hall to absorb some of that traffic that we suspect that would become this time of year for Christmas holidays. We anticipate timing moving that by week's end or first of next week and those customers who are still tapering and are taking check payments. That's worked pretty well. We appreciate finance and Sandy and Diane working with us on that. It's been a team effort. A lot of last-minute payers coming through. But any specific questions on the report? As we look through, we look at the items as we see some of the funds coming in through Zacchaeus, some of the activity that does continue with those accounts we do have with those folks. But any specific questions as it relates to the collector's report?
Have we heard anything from Ellis? Any response since we sent her the letter?
Yes, sir. We've been in contact with Travis Ellis's, apparently Bill Ken Steely, she has kind of taken the point on those remaining accounts. We have six accounts with Ellis that are remaining. We've been in contact with her. Unfortunately, those accounts that they do have or some of the estate properties is a little more labor intensive with the air property that may be involved, but we have been in contact with Miss Steely on that. A little bit better working relationship, I'd say, opened ended conversations that when we call or we email, it's almost an immediate, you know, feedback or response. We're not waiting a week to get some sort of answer from them, so we've been pleased with that so far.
Do you have the information with you to give us a total? You said there's six left, but what that total would be?
Those counts, the six, now, this is just with the Ellis law firm as it relates to delinquent accounts. We have about 36,000. That's the total in terms of delinquents. Let me just make sure.
Chairman, I had been wondering if this number got down to ones that we've tried to decide to be cost effective to take away whatever. I was wondering if at some point we might ask the attorney to put a tax lien on those properties and release them, if that would be, I mean, it's going to be a long thing. It's drawn out some of the one or two that's in an estate. If we put a tax lien, that'll take care of itself. And that estate's worked out and we could, might get lower our cost. It's just a question of what you would advise on that, but I'm just putting that out there.
Yeah, I would agree because the ones that, particularly with Ellis remaining, you know, he's got 17 heirs and the research, the time involved and many would make the comment that it's just labor intensive and not to mention the cost outweighs particularly the kind of property we might be looking at trying to get some money out of. So, I would agree that that might be a remedy. We might get moving forward on some of those. Even some of those with Zacchaeus, we met with them on the 17th. Deputy Tax Collector Lawrence Havis and myself, we had a chance for it in one-day orientation and they have in their, in their files, some of those accounts that also are going to be difficult to research and there may be a point in time where they just say, here's what we found, here's what we know, and we're really at standstill. So, the cost for accounting might be abbreviated if we, you know, utilize that tax lien approach.
And these accounts have been delinquent for some time, correct?
Yes. We're talking as we approach the 11-year mark, among '04, '06, with no activity, not even an attempt of any payment of any sort. You know, the majority of them, I think there's, the total with Zacchaeus now is about 59 of the new total. We have 53 accounts with Zacchaeus Law Firm and those accounts, majority of them from, you know, 2004 and '06 and '08 and '10, in fact, with no attempt of any payment.
Would you, Commissioner Owens, like to make a motion that we instruct the tax administrator to study the situation and recommend that we put tax liens on those that are, that no actions can make?
Matt, I would like to understand the process a little bit more. Now, this is taxes and the process works. You know, those accounts have gone before closure and just how to implement a tax lien per general statute, I'd like to know, you know, what that process is and make sure that, you know, we're going to make a motion to implement that, that we're not directing someone to do something that's not legally allowed.
Yeah, I would agree. And I would also want to, you know, reference the general statutes to make sure that we cover all the bases. It'd be something out of the search and then look at protocol and stipulations and see, you know, it might be better for the county, particularly on some of those. Some of those we've had some good activity, even some good response from the taxpayer who wants that demand letter has been sent by the law firm. That seems to excite a little bit of activity on their part, whereas a common letter from the assessors office might not mean much if it's got that letter. It prompts a payment and we had that happen actually with Christmas holidays. The account was paying full by an account from 2008 and that's been resolved. So, I would also encourage Mr. George, you know, to the search and see based on the general statutes, the process and the formula we might need to utilize for that.
Well, maybe we need to have a study done of the counties and see by your office and check and see what is in the best interest of the county to clear these accounts. Would you all agree to that? Have her study and bring back a report. Because you said you had six with the Ellis firm and 50 some with Zacchaeus.
We have 53, yes. And as you may have seen, we have 36 additional accounts ready to go to Zacchaeus and those have been delinquent also from 2004, 2006. You may have gotten that total list that no payment, no effort, no payment plan. We might get $50, you know, in October and no more activity, you know, at all. So, nothing to warrant, you know, we're kind of at a standstill and with no response from those taxpayers, so.
Chairman, I'd like to offer a motion on this, but before I do, I would also like to say, when you're doing your investigation and your study to bring back to us, if you would also look to see what position we are in the claim, we might be second or third in one. So, if you would put that in there too, double check that. Matt, Chairman, I make a motion that we ask our finance, our tax office to investigate this issue and present back to the, to the board at our next meeting, findings on volumes and ideas that we've discussed. And also would ask that if we could get that in print and emailed prior to the meeting we have. I make that a motion.
Okay. And then a motion has been made by Commissioner Owens. Do I hear a second? Second has been made. Any discussion? For the tax administrator to study the accounts and to give us a, the findings that she planned to come up with. So, the big nine, which concludes all this off.
I think I conclude with a recommendation as well.
Yeah, your recommendation.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I'm, I'm sure you will talk with the Zacchaeus Law Firm and Ellis Firm too.
Yes, the actual law firm.
Any others discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All opposed? Can you look forward to your report? Let me ask you a question. When are the listings going out? Do we have to?
Not for real estate. That's done automatically. Those personal property listings were already sent as well as the abstracts on December 29th and those, we've had some feedback. Business personal property, we directed those individuals to our VOR website. They can get a link or come by the office and get a form and we're collecting those. We've had a few come in, so.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Departmental reports? Yes.
Don't we have some other question for the question for the question?
Oh, yeah, wait with that.
Thank you. Mr. George?
Good morning. Just get the tax.
I'm interested in getting the tax. I'm sorry. Wrong pile.
You see a cumulative spreadsheet there that usually, well, I'll say usually, it happened this time last year around Thanksgiving when we received a mass of mailing, if you will, from the mortgage companies, CoreLogic, state employees. And we prepared them, Deputy Tax Collector Lawrence Havis on a spreadsheet for you there. I don't say a common thing, but state employees may make a payment and then ordinary juices and you will also submit payment, not realizing that it's an escrow. So, those are compiled on that cumulative spreadsheet for you with the account number and name reference there for, for approval for those.
Do you expect that going forward, that we're going to do that?
It is kind of a, the common trend in November when those mailings come through, that looks like that happened last year with, you know, duplicate, double payments, if you will, so.
Okay. So, let's go ahead and request a report.
Yeah, those are presented there for all those individuals' account number labeled from CoreLogic, from state employees on that, they would have been on that larger spreadsheet Um, legal size, it would have been at the very top, it would have said refund for November. You would have had some itemized list, CoreLogic, tax. Yeah, that's, that's what Mr. George has.
I'm trying to get somebody to help me. Okay. So, we're going to do this for no double refunds as agreed?
Yes, that's typically the way we have, you know, presented them with the account number reference. I'm not sure if you want to go through each name or you can see that they're itemized by account and who paid them. And typically that money, you know, is refunded back to the entity it was received from.
Amendment.
Yes, sir.
Question before we do this. I noticed that we budgeted $30,000 for these refunds in our annual budget. We've got $12,000 refunds here today. Is this, do you by chance know how much our total cumulative cumulative is as of this $12,000?
I do not. I don't have the total figure.
Those bills were already paid. They're really technically overpaid.
Yeah, really.
Those bills were already paid when that money was received.
Got paid twice.
Right. They've been paid twice and that's why they need to go back to the.
CoreLogic.
CoreLogic or the credit union or wherever.
They're really not a, the label is a refund, but it's typically not the actual refund per se. So, you know, we have the label, we find, but it's really not, I'm going to say the countless money because we got double paid.
It's really a reimbursement.
Really, yes.
Let me just make sure we understand the questions that I'm posing. In our annual budget, we project X number of dollars that we anticipate to be refunded based on past year expenses. This year, we projected 30,000. I mean, it couldn't, we could take back 60, but I'm just wondering, you know, have we reached that point? I mean, if we have, we'll just have to make some provisions to take care of. But I'm just wondering how far are we out since we, you know, we've got this much? It's not a question as to whether or not we're giving see of what we're giving back, but it's a question of, you know, especially in next year, what will we, we project? And that's the way we set our budget, is what we project. We're going to have to extend it. So, that was a question. My question as to whether or not, we may not, may not be able to answer that. Give me that.
But officials, in your reports, your revenue reports that you receive, the one that I had printed, I'm not sure if it was the 31st, but we had about $4,000 through, I think, the end of November that we'd already refunded out of the 30,000 budget. So, this 12,000 keeps us where we need to be. The bulk of them are usually sent out this time of year and as we go through the debt set off over the next couple of months, we'll receive numerous duplicate payments. So, the bulk of the refunds really go out between December and I would say February and March. But according to the budget report, we're fine within those figures and I think this will close any of those.
Oh, nice, sixty thousand, okay.
All right, thanks for saying it, appreciate that, yes.
Okay, so I think we can deal with all of these at one time, instead of going through these individually. The ones that are refunds from November twenty-fourteen, that is on the legal size paper, do I hear a motion?
I move with repay the reimbursed, reimbursed November overpayment.
Do I have a second? That motion has been made, second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Now, your question, did you get it?
Okay. There was still an item pending from a few meetings ago regarding their, Michael Elliott, you may have seen that correspondence, that has been resolved, there is no refund. The taxpayer transposed the numbers when she utilized the official payments website, therefore, when that payment was posted, it, with her transposed number, it was transposed to Mr. Elliott's, and error. So both accounts have been paid in full, we have corrected and credited the other account as needed, so that is kind of a resolved itself, if you will, there is no refund, all our account have been both paid in full.
Okay, so we just wanted to, you're not using.
That's right, I just wanted to clarify that, because that was kind of a, had been tabled from a previous meeting there, so.
Let's move on to the next one.
Okay. There is one, Jennifer Marie Jones, well, the taxpayer sold the car to the dealership, that would be, you know, part of the tax, and regarding the Jaguar vehicle. That was one hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-two cents.
Okay. We have to take it forward to your grounds, yeah, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
A second.
Second.
Motion has been made, a second, any discussion? Okay, the motion is to repay, so refund to Jennifer Jones, and mine of hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-two cents. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That's a good.
Okay, the additional one, for the property on Foster Road, you'll see that one noted there for Mr. Riddick. This was a correction that was made when we learned that we had some coding information incorrect on the property record card, and it was in fact, it is in fact a double wide number, modular, as it was coded for a number of years, so by general statutes, and Mr. Riddick had submitted a request for a refund, and he learned this because he put the property up for sale, and the appraisal revealed that it was in fact a double wide, it's got the HUD verification ID number that is associated with all double wides, and so the correction was made, and a release was done on his two thousand and fourteen bill, and the refund he requested is for those years that we had incorrectly coded as a modular. Double wides get far more depreciation, if we can imagine, than a sticked-up home, which is what the property record card, we made those corrections, so I think I had submitted a copy of his written handwritten request from Mr. Riddick, so.
I have a question, when I looked that over, I had a question about the criteria, and I'm not asking for explanation of criteria, but I would suspect that the criteria for what qualifies for modular and mobile home, double wide, or whatever, I suspect that that has changed in the last few years. You might want to check with Edgar, building code, and things like that, to make sure that we're using what the state agrees, is that, and also we need to take into consideration when, if there was a change, at what year did it change, rather than, I mean, I just want to make sure that we're not just, you know, he put it up for sale, I think is what he said.
Yes.
I want to make sure that we're doing by the statute, and not just because somebody said so.
Yeah, I've visited the property, I saw the HUD tag associated with that double wide, so.
Very good.
Despite the fact of it having the characteristics of maybe if we drove by and we looked, and it's got the high pitched roof, it's got the brick foundation, there is nowhere in the state that if it's got that HUD tag associated with it, it has to be deemed a double wide, and it's been that way since, you know, it was moved there in oh-four. I suspect it's been that way for day one, just based on those characteristics from a curbside aesthetic quality, it's one of your nicer double wides, but it's definitely a double wide, there's no way it could be. I've visited the property myself, and have spoken numerous times with, you know, Mr. Riddick, and made my own observations, it's definitely a double wide.
And I know you have some prior experience with that type of.
And, you know, it was just a little, when, you know, it was, when there's things, a terrible error, we had it coded, you know, wrong, and that was, that's just a error on that point, so, yeah, and it does make a difference, in this case, so, you know, difference for him with regard to depreciation and.
And Mr. Riddick did not catch the error either?
No, in fact, he himself, all these many years, suspected it was a modular, but there is, there is no gray area on this, you know, it's got that identifying NTA tag on it that is associated with all the double wides, there's, it's not a case where we would not see that represented, it's, yeah, and we've had it coded that wrong for probably.
She has corrected her.
Well, those double wides or single wides will have an NCA tag on, and a modular has a seal at the technical panel, and it's either or, it's no gray, it's either got the double wide, it's got the seal and panel, it's a modular, and nowadays, looks will fool you because the double wides can have a high picture.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
One other question.
Okay.
I believe there is a stipulation, you haven't corrected, that's correct, but I believe there's a stipulation that we can only go back five years, or can, how long, or my question maybe should be, how long can we go back and make corrections on a tax error by the general state?
Yes, sir, in this case, we can go back to, which we viewed when we made the release from Mr. Riddick there, we just checked.
Two thousand nine.
Okay, two thousand nine, in terms of, we can, well, the error, which amounted to technically just over thirty, almost thirty-two thousand dollar mistake or so, but in terms of going back, we went back to the oh-nine, two thousand nine.
You can begin in five years.
Yes, in terms of that, and that, that total figure that you see from Mr. Riddick is reflected of all those years.
Entertain a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion that we refund tax, overpay taxes for William Michael Riddick about one thousand twenty-three dollars and eighty cents.
A second.
Second.
Motion has been made, any other further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Is there anything else?
No, that is pretty much it. We are continuing with our tax software upgrade, if you may have seen in my recent report, we'll have a chance to do some, some training as we approach March with customer service, with Anthony Carroll, it's going to be a user-friendly approach, we hope, with the new Keystone, it'll be a little bit different look, but I just want to mention that's going smoothly, they're doing some custom workflows with built-in that'll, that'll kind of expedite with report running, building queries, so that's going well, our new service has been in place since the first week of December, Warren Curry has been kind of instrumental in helping with that transition now, with Keystone reps with their IT department, so that continues to move, you know, in full speed ahead, so.
But will there be any published access to that, in other words, published media domain query, at least with their backlog?
Not, not within Keystone, no, sir, not within GB forty or forty-one, that'll be a user-defined tax office, customer service-based, and we probably typically wouldn't want that, you know, we'll be able to do burn reports, I mean, not in that particular role with tax, you know, taxpayer. There will be some functions on perhaps a GIS as we make that transition, that our Atlas Geo folks will, you know, have some user tools, some things, that they'll be able to look at, some measuring fields that also will be incorporated with Keystone, but not in the transition itself, not within, you know, we probably would not want that, but, you know, there'll be some opportunity for it on GIS level for interaction.
So you still vetted, raised your Ds with GIS site?
Right, or the website that Atlas Geo maintains source, that'll also be with the transition, and they'll do some export data, and they'll be able to get in the specs that they're looking for, for maps or for parcel outlines, that kind of thing, so that'll also be tied into the data conversion itself.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, personnel report, I think you need that, you have seen, department reports. Does anybody have any questions, what the department has that are here, about anything that they have? Okay, looking through, we've seen the correspondence, and has been previous mention, like the Eastern Alliance, the combination of those, we have seen, like plan merger, we have the calendar, I think we need to move on to public hearings, and the first one. Okay, move on to, I have my motion. Our motion for the enter your public hearing.
So move.
So.
Which one is this?
The one for Mrs. Yours' property, rezoning request from A one to C one for Miss Bessie Yours' parcel.
Pleasure, please.
Motion has been made, and second is to enter our public hearing, the rezoning request from A one to C one for Miss Bessie Yours' parcel, zero ones dash zero zero two one three. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Mrs. Yours, C you or I plan, would you like to come and for us?
I will. I am Bessie Yours, and this is Mike Duran with US Cellular, and I have made a motion that would come to your attention pertaining to the cell tower, we are asking approval to have an erected about halfway between the hill and the middle street on US one fifty-eight, and that will be directly across from Gateswood Hunt Club. It will be about three hundred feet tall, and it will be light. It will be on a farm that is a small farm, about ninety acres, has no houses and no upstairs on the farm. We have met with the planning committee, and they have approved a rezoning from agricultural to commercial for ten acres, and I think that's required for a cell tower. US Cellular and I have agreed on a contract that's already completed, and we're just waiting for approval from the, we have to erect cell tower, and I think you're ready to go ahead with the erection, aren't you?
We are ready, well, Phil, who gets next?
They are ready, okay, so we hope you'll give approval, and we're ready to answer any questions that we can.
And this will be off the road, off the, off the line. And the aisle hasn't changed because it's a lightest tower, just a C one, watching the ordinance. Okay, any questions from public? Any comments? I think people will look forward to have better cell service.
Yes, we have poor cell service in this area.
And, any public comments? Okay, you have heard that the planning board has recommended that a rezoning request be made from Mrs. Yours' property from A one to C one.
Please.
So if you have to come out of public, public hearing, okay, we need to come out of public hearing, and.
I'll make a motion, Chairman, that we come out of public hearing, second.
Okay, motion's made, second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, now we have before us a recommendation from the planning board for Mrs. Bessie Yours' property to channel the zoning, A one to C one, erect a cell phone, lightest cell phone tower on a piece of property, or is, do I hear a motion, go forward?
Chairman, I have a, I have a question.
Okay.
I'd like to ask, and this gentleman here probably will answer, or if not, Ms. Yours.
Yep.
Those require ten acres, correct, for the rest of that.
Yes.
The total acreage from that parcel is?
Ninety.
Ninety, okay, and I know Ms. Hopper alluded to being back off the road. Ms. Yours, I remember where the house was, is it roughly that, right where that house was?
Right where the house was.
That you tore down?
That's right.
Okay, that's what I was, I know she asked if they off the road, and I remember what, how far back the house was.
Okay.
That's the only question.
I have a, sorry. This, I ask to pay my pardon for lack of knowledge of all the cell tower does, but it will accommodate all carriers?
Correct, it will accommodate up to four on this particular tower.
Well, you have liberty to say what may not be carried, or what.
Any, well, Verizon is, was located in this general area, so they will be, once they decide to construct a tower in this area, come into this area, they most likely will jump on this tower, I would assume.
So Verizon, at present, is one of those that may not be serviced by this tower unless they, we come in?
Until they budget a site over here.
All right, any others?
Well, they all will come here eventually, build it, and they will come, so, that's all I have.
It's, that's usage-driven, I'm sure.
It is that, well, there, carriers are required to cover areas, are required by licensing to cover.
Like FCC requirements.
They need to cover certain areas, and they, as they build up their systems, they, as the systems grow, they.
But we invite them, if they're required, what is the moratorium on them not being required?
Well, there's always a, the pot, the demand, I guess, would be, like, if there are a lot of calls coming from the area, like, look, we need coverage here for AT&amp;P, Verizon, and whatnot, they do listen, they do listen, and they also, it's not always the case, but they will roam off of the USA on the tower, so their signal would carry through ours, but they don't like to do that.
Can, can you tell us a criteria for placing the antenna and making it active? Truth being, we do have a little experience where towers are erected, and then there are no antenna, no connection made for some period of time.
Not, not to lay with that type of build plan, typically when we build a tower, it's start to finish, yeah.
I think what Commissioner Freeman may be alluding to is.
I think what Commissioner Freeman may be alluding to is an individual has erected a tower themselves. Is that what we were told on screen?
Well, no, it's actually SBA House.
Okay.
If you're familiar with that, I'm sure you are. But they erected a tower for some two years and that question happened.
Yeah, they were probably, they got word that someone's looking in the area and then they wanted to jump in front and carrier hasn't come out yet. But they will eventually.
And, and they did.
Yeah.
Took two years.
It's a budget. That four G is.
So I know there's some criteria, that was a question, the criteria is there a high limit, so to speak? Because they're paying a rental fee for that two years for that property without having antenna.
Right, that would be there, that would be on the, the honest time.
And I think we, interested in our citizens and connections with cell phones, if a tower's erected, like, make it active soon as possible.
We are, since the, the next step is get the building there.
And we do like that all the carriers can be on the tower, so we don't have all these towers.
Correct, maybe you just time to go on the USA.
See you, you will be great, don't stay.
Yeah, I know where to direct them.
Okay. Okay, did I hear a motion?
I make a motion. We approve the recommendation to allow US Cellular to construct the cell tower on the property as promised.
And for discussion, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Building inspector's office. Okay, we have a second item on the agenda for a public hearing, for a zoning ordinance text amendment for assisted living facilities. We need to go into public hearing, but before we do, we're going to take a five-minute break. So we can stretch our legs. Thank you. I thank everybody for that and you cut on your mics, please. Before we go into a public hearing for our second issue, the zoning ordinance for text amendment for assisted living facility, I wanted to call on our planning director, Zach Tease, to come and give us a synopsis.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
This issue was initially tasked to the planning board in November. And during that meeting, they were unable to come up with a general definition of what an assisted living facility was. So we decided to wait until our December meeting to come up with the definition and determine what districts and parking and any other information that should be associated with the assisted living facility definition for the county. The definition that the planning board passed unanimously is presented in your packets. And the zoning districts where it should be allowed by a special use permit is also stated. The, after great discussion and consideration, the planning board recommended that the parking be done at point nine spaces per bed and one space per every two employees on the larger ship. This was after great discussion by the planning board and this is their recommendation to the county commissioners. And they recommend that you approve their, their recommendations. And these items be placed in the ordinance for general use and general definition of assisted living facilities. Because these definitions and these regulations will not only be regulated for one facility, it's going to be for any facility or any kind of use that may fall under this definition for the future.
Okay, thank you, any questions for Mrs. Baptiste?
And let me say, this would cover any adult care facilities. I believe that's how the Department of Health and Human Services classified.
Yes, any facility that would be able to, in general, follow the new definition. As stated in the definition presented by the planning board, it is wide-ranging. It covers adult, adult care homes, group homes for development, mentally disabled adults, and multi-unit assisted housing with service. So it's going to be for a wide range of facilities.
I do have one question, what I'd like to report requirement, and it's not, it says for every two employees on the larger ship, how do you all determine that, I mean, how do you all determine, not how you, how do you all determine?
We're going to rely on the goodwill of the facility to give us accurate numbers for the larger ship. If they say that it's going to be ten, then we're going to rely on them and trust them that they will not misrepresent that and use that number.
Okay, I, you, I know you are aware that Department of Health and Human Services has staffing requirements.
Yes, ma'am.
And that also with the all-time unit, there are also additional requirements by staff.
Yes, ma'am.
So you will look at those numbers as well?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, Chairman, by my, during, during sessions with planning board and Chairman of the planning board as well as our, our planning board director, it was discussed that we followed those requirements I set forth with the, with the state. And you said correctly.
Yes, sir.
And I just, I just asked a question for clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
On the planning board meeting.
Also, the definition of this was based on what the state recommends.
Yes, sir.
But as far as the parking, that was not based on any particular recommendation or any type of statistical data, but was based mostly on what the board felt that would be appropriate.
Yes, in terms of anything else, the state does provide some guidance in terms of the definition. So that communities aren't left out in coal or trying to figure out what exactly this is and what exactly nursing home is and how to differentiate between the two. But in terms of where the community feels the need and the best zoning districts or the best parking or any other standards that go along with the facility, they leave that up to the community to decide. They do have some regulation on lighting, from what I understand. But the general, the general development of, of the site, they like to leave up to the community so that the communities don't feel so bound to, to follow things that might not be very conducive for them. We might need more parking, we might need less. They just like to leave it up to the community to feel their way through the minor issues. But for the definitions, they like to try to provide clear guidance on, on the definitions.
I'd like to make a comment on the parking spaces too, because this has been going on for quite a while. In our, in one of our September meetings, the board commissioners approved to allow any more parking spaces on this property. And now we're getting nine tenths of a parking space per bed. And one parking space for every two employees. I'm just, one of the rest of the employees are going to be parking. During a shift change, you could have double employees rather than half, you could have double employees. And we're cutting it down or lending it to one for every two employees. It just, it doesn't, it just doesn't add up in my mind.
Okay, there was our question for Mrs. Baptiste, so that was just comments.
That was comments.
Okay, any questions for her before we go into public hearing?
Would you be able to share with us the discussions that the planning board had as pertaining to the parking and the parking spaces?
Yes, sir. One, one, when I, when I am, when I give a recommendation to the planning board, it is simply a recommendation. It's, it's meant to be a talking point to get the conversation started. Because I'm, I'm of the, of the plan soup that we're more, the planner is there to guide the community. Not necessarily telling the community what to do, but simply to provide guidance in terms of what is normal and what is appropriate. When I initially submitted the recommendation to the, to the planning board, it was one point two spaces per bed and one space for every two employee on the larger ship. We reached, there were several discussions. We went from to one space per bed and one point five space for every two employees, three point seven five per bed or one space for every two. And then we did, finally voted on the point nine per bed and one per every two employee. So they considered a couple of different scenarios concerning the parking.
Do I hear a motion for us to go into a public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are now in a public hearing and we'll listen through the public comments. If anyone has Mr. Rangery.
You know, I was here a time or two back when my concern was parking places and I guess that's part of what we're, you know, talking about today and I couldn't ever really understand. And like, must have felt it, that's what Billy said, that eighty-four. And I think that this thing had been voted on a couple of times, it was, it wasn't official until we went through the planning board and were back in today. But certainly eighty-four parking places is a minimum. And one of the, only point that I want to make to some of the people that might not understand it because somebody said, well, if you ain't got nowhere to park, park the side of the road and park on the grass. But there's a differentiation with the, the other nursing home down east and then it. According to the soil maps, and that is probably the, you can't get stuck out there. It's sandy, the water percolates on through, you put grass out there, especially Bermuda grass, and if you don't have anywhere to park, you can park. But I've been in this world a long time and Billy Felton has surveyed most all of this. And there's no way to take clay out of clay. And you don't need anybody out there parking the side of the road or on the grass if we don't have enough parking. And my other comment, and I think you all know this, but I couldn't understand why the argument never got started why we didn't have enough places. It goes all the way back to wanting forty places for seventy people, it made no sense. But the other point about all of this is the fact that once a contractor finishes a job, once you approve this thing, that's the end of it. You don't go back and with your hands out here and say, well, we need some more parking places. It don't work. Today is the only day to get it done. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rangery. Anyone else with a comment? Mr. Brothers.
Good morning, Chuck Brothers, Chairman of the Planning Board. I will reiterate some of the comments that the planner said. This was a very deliberated topic on behalf of the planning board and I am very proud of our board and the manner in which we tackled this subject. It was heavily debated. There was two motions put on the floor that did not go forward because of the lack of a second. The last option, which was the ninety percent to, to the bid ratio, was the one that got the vote, which was four to one. We did get the, the comment from the contractor that the, probably the largest shift would be somewhere around fifteen. So that kind of fueled the point nine, no discussion to the, to the ratio of employees to parking spots. So if you, if you look at the seventy bids, which they did communicate to us that their contract with the state is per bid, not by, per bid rate, it is per bid. So you will have seventy bids there. We felt like that the, the ratio would get us down to like sixty-three parking spots after seventy bids, which is ten percent off and then the fifteen, at doing the ratio there of one parking spot for every two would give us about seven more, so you physically could have a minimum of seventy spots based on the original conversation that was presented to the planning board by the contractor. Now, that is to be discussed with the planning director as to what that official number would be and we hope that that, that number is going to be presented in a manner that is, that can go forward, that we can all work with. But that is, that is a ratio that is going to be determined by, by her based on information he'll get. We did have a discussion on the, on the eighty-four, but, and it went back, back and forth. I think we deliberated on this about fifty-five minutes. I think the overall concern of the planning boards is this, is that I think most of us have visited some type of facility where a loved one is at. And I for one wouldn't want to be carrying my seventy-six-year-old mother to visit somebody and have to park off-site or have her go and visit somebody that would have to park on road curb or overflow parking in another facility. We felt like that, that it needed to be incorporated, everything in its entirety on the property. I do believe that it is the duty of any business to make sure that the customers are served to their fullest extent, to make sure that they can do business there, whether it's Walmart or assisted living. And the last thing I would do is go to a facility and not have a parking spot because I'll go find somewhere else to park and do my business somewhere else. And I think the majority of the planning board felt the same way, that we, that this needed to go forward. It does have future impact as the ability of the facility in place now does have the ability to go back to the board of adjustment to, to hash this back over. But it, it was very well deliberate, deliberated on our behalf that there should be adequate parking. And this is what we felt is the number that, that should be, thank you.
Mr. Brothers, I wonder if you'd like to bring up to us too the study that county manager and the planner also discussed with the planning board as pertaining to other facilities like, as well as some of the clients will have the ability to have an automobile there parked.
That was discussed, there was information that was put forth, that was done between the county manager and the planner of scenarios that are real. The comment was made to the planning board that, you know, that there's an industry standard that, that goes by. But some of the information that I saw, you know, to me, it was not a standard. I think the Windsor Heights has sixty bids and sixty spots and that's what stuck in my mind. And then it was, one facility was less, one facility was more. I think we used Winslow's and Wisp City as a, as a, as a target of information. Most everybody knows that, I did my own call in up there and found out that they had over a hundred and forty spots for about seventy to eighty bids, I don't know the specific number. But what stuck in, out in my mind is there is no rule of thumb, is what stuck in my mind. It's what is what. It's what is what, is what is best that we feel as the planning committee, that the county has got to live with after today's meeting and going forward, and I, I think this is where we feel like that, this is where we need to be as a minimum. If y'all elect and say that you need more, that is certainly your priority, but we felt like that, um, and I, and I do think that the, the majority of the planning board numbers in discussion of the 1.2, you know, a lot of us don't think of that as a percentage, but that is a hundred and twenty percent. Uh, this is ninety percent of the ratio, but the fact of the matter is that we felt like as a, as a board, and fairness to the county and the people that are going to do business there, that it should be adequate parking, and that's a number that we felt like that everybody could live with.
Mr. Brothers, also, there was a motion made for .75.
Correct.
I think that discussion was, was valid in there, um, which would have ended up with sixty spaces, I believe, instead of seventy. Is that correct?
Yeah, but that motion died before I was up.
Right.
But we had two motions, one at .75 and one at .80 or .85.
I wrote down three points one, and then one.
Mr. Brothers?
Yes, sir.
The, uh, in your estimation, the property as it exists now, easily will accommodate the number of beds that, that seems like the math's going to work out. Is that true?
After the vote of the .9, the representative from the organization was sitting two rows back, and I verbally asked him, I said, "Can you work with this number?", and he nodded yes.
Good, um, so you're leaning on him, on his nod and that, so I'm just curious, would it accommodate more?
I think the whole thing in a nutshell that, that very, that sticks out to me is that, uh, there's probably not adequate land to accommodate the eighty-four without infringing upon the ten-by-twenty-foot, uh, rule that we have for parking spaces. So they could very easily probably put more spaces in, but then they would have to encroach upon the planning department to get a variance on the ten-by-twenty. And we've had old businesses in the county, um, right in my neighborhood, a church that redid their, their parking lot, which was Eden Temple on Drunk Hill Road, and their parking spots are ten-by-twenty. So I, I felt like that, based on what that is, and, you know, you have a mass of people going there at certain, at one time during the day, the thing that stuck out to me at Winslow's, um, and also to a lady that I spoke with in Greenville, she said, "You know, we've got adequate parking during the day." She said, "But we use curbside parking within the city of Greenville," and they lie there. Our problem is, is when we have special events, uh, bringing in, uh, all of the families for a, a facility celebration, or you have Mother's Day or Father's Day, Thanksgiving and Christmas, then we've got people parking in yards. That's what we didn't want. That's what we didn't want. So if it, to me, if that stuck out in somebody's mind in Greenville, then it should be a huge consideration in Gates County.
One thing to take into consideration, and I've, I've seen this in real life, is they're going to celebrate the birthdays in February, all of them on Monday.
Right, same here.
On the first and the twelfth, whenever, all on Monday, so that'd be a big one, too. Um, I, I think y'all done a good job.
Well, I'm very proud of our board, it was probably one of the, the best debated topics that we had, uh, in my five and a half years on it. It was, it was done with a lot of thoughtfulness and consideration from our part. Um, I don't think we're going to be overwhelmed by assisted living facilities coming to the county every six months. Um, I do have some, um, problem in the fact that we got the cart to hit the horse, um, this should have been tackled waiting for, but it is what it is, and we're doing this now, and I think what we have presented and what we deliberated and what we voted on is in the best interest of the twelve thousand one hundred and ninety-seven people in Gates County.
Good job.
Any other comments? I'm just a little concerned by the staff, the subspace for the staff, because fifteen, I just according to DHSS and reading about the numbers of staffing, minimum numbers, and that's not taking into consideration custodians, food services, and those, I think it's going to be more than fifteen.
And again, um, just as my recommendation is only a recommendation to the planning board, this is only a recommendation to the planning board. The county commissioners do have the power to adjust the numbers, um, if they so choose and they feel that the numbers don't necessarily go with what they, what you guys want, because this ultimately has to be approved by the board of county commissioners to go into that.
I just wish that we could have a little bit more solid numbers of our staff, because we have, from what you've had said, you, you were informed by what the.
Yeah, we would, we would have to rely on the discretion of the developer.
And, and of the developer, and he gave us, maybe the information was not totally correct, we still, I just still, still.
Right.
Want to speak?
Not for me, of course.
Okay. Could you come to the podium, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, I'm Joe White, and I'm with, um, Meridian Senior Living out of Hickory Ward Management Company that, um, manages assisted living facilities in North Carolina. We have over sixty facilities that we manage, and in past, uh, ten years, we have built, uh, over twenty brand new facilities like Gates House. Um, thanks for the debate that you've made, and, uh, continue to put forth to try to resolve this parking issue. Um, we, uh, as I said, have, 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 uh, developed facilities like this in North Carolina, and we just recently completed a home that, uh, virtually identical to Gates House in Franklin, North Carolina, where, um, the parking spaces that were provided and are deemed adequate by the zoning ordinance there were forty-two parking spaces. Um, you mentioned, um, facilities and facilities you looked at, Windsor House is one of ours, there are sixty spaces there. Um, we also have a home in Moyaw, Moyaw, excuse me, uh, it's called Currituck House. Uh, Currituck House has fifty-four spaces for ninety beds, identical type of facility serves assisted living and special care residents, and there are fifty-four parking spaces that are provided there. The fifty-four parking spaces that were, that were calculated by a formula of three spaces for every five beds is how the fifty-four parking spaces were, um, deemed adequate at, uh, at Moyaw. Uh, the three spaces for every five beds is how we arrived at the, uh, total parking spaces that we would like to have at Gates House, which is forty-two. Uh, I have with me, uh, two of the ladies that operate these facilities, and they can describe and do staffing, they can, they can ask you questions about staff, personnel, and, uh, so Deborah Warren is a face that you're going to see around in Gatesville for the next several months. She's here to, um, set the facility up and get it open and operating, and then next I have Lauren Marcel, she's with, uh, Currituck House in Moyaw, and, uh, she can talk about how her facility's stacked and how the parking spaces work out there.
Thank you so much for having us, and I do want to say we have felt so welcome here in the few times that I've been here, we're very excited to provide a very needed service to your area. Um, I can attest to the staff, and I've been an executive director for ten years, uh, I've worked for various, uh, facilities. So when you talk about assisted living having seventy residents, that number seems as large, but of those beds here, we have forty Alzheimer's dementia beds, none of those residents will be driving. We have thirty assisted living, um, and out of those, I will tell you my ten years' experience, there's either no residents who drive, or you have one. And the one that I have that's familiar, this one has a fan park out there that they just keep things done. I can tell you that the staff thing that you're talking about, I don't know if you're talking about assisted living or skilled nursing. Still nursing, their staff to resident ratio is much higher.
I was looking at, I went on, I talked to the people at DHSS.
Okay, so for our building, there will be, the way that we do it is one to eight staff in your Alzheimer's unit, and there is, there is with your administrative staff, and when your building is full, there will be from twelve to fifteen people in our building. I do this every day, that's how much staff that we have. Our, and that is our largest first shift, because you have housekeeping, you have dining services, and you have all your administrative offices there. Second shift, you're going to have four to five staff total. Third shift, you're going to have three staff. That's per your state regulation, to get your red book, it'll tell you what you have to have on every shift. Um, I will tell you that at, um, Alamant's House is a ninety-four bed, and they have sixty parking places, there's more than halfway. When you have your staff turnover from first to second shift, I know you're talking about how many spaces you have and how you're going to have a change of shift, but then you've got all these parking places where your visitors, there are not a lot of visitors there. So you have more than adequate staff, and when your staff comes in to park, you have plenty of parking places. Now, I will tell you that in my sister facilities that have this, and I'm just opened up the Franklin House, um, I was over the Gilford House, over Alamant's House, I also work at Spring Harbor here at the Outer Banks, I will tell you that you have empty parking places all the time. And, um, the parties that we do have, such as Christmas and your Thanksgiving, I've never had, it wasn't placed for someone to park, so. I, I really don't think we need that many parking places, I would rather respectfully ask that you understand that forty of those beds are Alzheimer's, they're not driving, thirty of those residents, you may have one at the most, two that drive. Most of our residents are around eighty years old, some late seventies, eighties, nineties or a hundred, families wanted them because they don't want mom and daddy to drive anymore. Families do not come visit every day, that's unfortunate, I wish they did. I wish, the problem was that we needed more parking places, because our families are there, they're alive. But we're going to provide a service, and we're going to be there, and I can tell you that it's adequate, adequate, one that adequate parking. And one thing that they said today, that if we come here and we decide on the number that we're asking, and when the contractors walk away, there's not change, and I will tell you that I work for Meridian Senior Living, and we care for our seniors, and if we ever needed a need that we needed, Spanner Parking Lot, our company would absolutely make sure that was done. You have any questions for me?
I would ask, um, because you have so much experience doing, what is the single, what's a single event during a, a calendar year that is the type of traffic?
I'd bring an opening, ribbon cutting.
Outside, that's one time again.
I will tell you that we plan our main events, usually we do a Mother's Day brunch or something, I'll tell you that in my experience, hardly anybody comes, and that's sad for me, that I've seen, our, our staff that comes, the children and the grandchildren. You may have three or four family members that come. We do host a Thanksgiving meal that we invite our families on, which is usually the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and we limit, we do say, try to bring in more than four people to the party, and I will tell you that you don't have that many. In assisted living room, most of the families come and take mom and dad home for Thanksgiving and Christmas. We do have a Christmas holiday party, um, and again, that's when our families come, and we do, uh, like a heavy order punch type thing, and Santa comes and we, our residents usually do a performance. And again, it's very sad that you may have five or six family members that actually come and participate with that, but they are a bit of that.
From a, from a historical, um, point of view, how many of the beds, once you're fully occupied, how many do you think would be county residents, that would be residents in that facility?
Again, it, it's according to the area that is here, um, based that we would love to, and the reason we put it here, because we decided there's a need here. It's a service that you all need, that you don't have to go to Virginia. Um, we have brochures right now, um, with my name on it outside of the facility, uh, that we're now starting to do some marketing in the area, and unbelievably, it's just like every weekend, I'm getting calls. Uh, I will tell you that of the four calls that I got this weekend was from family that were here, that want to move mama from Suffolk, and I actually had a lady that called wants to move her grandmother and uncle from Florida to here because she's here. Um, we are going to be accepting Medicaid, that is a need in this area, and I will tell you that one of the things I love about Meridian Senior Living is our brother and sister facilities are not taking Medicaid anymore because of the cuts in North Carolina, and my boss tried to transfer said, "We're going to keep taking Medicaid, because people need to have a nice place to go, somebody's going to take care of them." So we're hoping to get as many from this area as we can, because we want this to be home. We want this to be home, and that was one of the questions I had from Franklin House that I just opened, "Are you going to take people from Georgia and Tennessee, or are you going to take the people here?" We're going to take the people who need a place to live, and need to be taken care of. Our main focus right now is on Gates County, we want to provide a service for you and for the citizens that are here, and so far it's been very positive that your residents that are going to want to move mom and daddy back here.
Now, I hope that you will have the employee parking, the farthest away from, from the doors.
They are, that's, usually the, the parking facilities are in the back of the building, they come, they have to punch a clock anyways, come through the back, punch a clock down, and that is absolutely, our, our residents and our families will be parking up front. And we also, good thing for you to know, we have transportation, we, we'll have a facility van, we would really like if anyone wants to take our residents shopping and out at the end, which by the way, this county doesn't have the real estate, we don't have much of that here, but we'll take to the family dollar on the Dollar Tree, that's our big thing to them, to spend their money. So, um, you know, we're excited about Community Center that's across the street, we're actually going to be partnering with them, I've been over there talking to them about, you know, us being a resource to provide activities for your community here, and for them to come to use our facilities, it's right in the libraries in back, and we'd like for some of our staff to volunteer to do some things for the seniors and for the town here. We very much are involved in the town, to become a part of the town. So I, I really love that Community Center across the street, we're going to help with the Meals on Wheels and all that stuff, too. So, um, I met your wonderful town manager, I sat down and talked to her, and she's actually called me a couple of times, I haven't, I'm emailing, but, um, you know, please feel free, anything you all need from us, we very much want to be a part of your community.
Good morning, and, uh, thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak. My name is Lauren Duncan-Marcel, and I'm the executive director at the Currituck House, and we are located in Moyaw, North Carolina. Um, I have been a licensed nursing home administrator, as well as a licensed assisted living administrator for twenty-four years, uh, worked on new property developments in Maryland, Virginia, and in North Carolina, and I did open the Currituck House, was onsite before the facility actually opened. Um, I'd be hard pressed to emphasize any, um, more on some of the points that Deborah has already brought up, but I'd like to share a couple of, um, things that I noted while various people were discussing the scenario of parking spaces. Um, there are a lot of other agencies that regulate what we do after we've opened, I know that this is still the planning and development phase of the project, but we have, uh, a fire marshal, we have, um, social services in each county, and of course, we have DHHS in Raleigh who also regulates what we do. Um, I know that in my building, and again, I have ninety beds in my facility, I have forty-eight for memory care, and I have forty-two in our assisted living, I have one resident that has a car, and he will not drive at one about a mile away from the facility. If you've ever traveled, uh, north to south during the summer with traffic, going to the Outer Banks, it's just not the best scenario, so he doesn't even really use his car that often, so I would challenge the, the notion that, um, we need parking spaces based on the number of residents, would pretty much be based on the number of visitors that those residents are having. Never are they all there at the same time, you know, another anomaly out there that just does not occur. Like she says, they come at different times during the day, and it's, uh, never in a promenade our facility, parking spaces. Another thing I was thinking, as you all were talking about beds and numbers of visitors being there all at the same time, and I would agree to that ribbon cuttings, and we do an annual fundraiser every year called the Currituck Awash, the proceeds go to the, um, Alzheimer's Association, even in events like that, where we have to go through the county to get permission for the signage and everything, never had problems with parking, and nor we had to have people park down. park down on the sides of the street going into our neighborhood on Moyoc Landing Drive. Never had any complaints or concerns filed with the county or with our state licensing agency regarding inadequate parking. So, for our facility, based on our size and our staffing patterns, which are going to exceed what this facility will do, we've never had a problem with it. Frequently, at least half of our parking spaces, at the busiest time of the day, are empty. The other thing, I'm doing a little bit of math of having the numbers of visitors onsite at the same time, my common areas in my building, like dining rooms, living rooms, TV rooms, libraries, our fire marshal sets the occupancy in those areas, never could I have the number of parking spaces and my residents all in any of those spaces at the same time anyway. It just doesn't, it defies logic, and it would not be legal. There's a certain number of people that can be in any given room at one time. So, again, that whole notion of having these large, large numbers of people being onsite at any one time and trying to struggle for parking spaces is just not a reality. Might be at church on Sundays, or your favorite restaurant during dinner hour, but it's just not what typically happens at an assisted living facility. And again, having run a very large one in Virginia Beach for twelve years, it just doesn't happen that all of your spots are taken at the same time. And so, the idea of adding more to what they've already identified as being reasonable, which is so close to the number we have, just doesn't make sense why you would add the extra spaces. The other thing that's also a concern, if you're adding more parking spaces, then you're taking away to add those spaces. My residents enjoy having a nice lawn, landscaping, bushes, courtyards, areas to walk in and sit. And it does make me very sad personally, that anybody would consider possibly taking some of that away or modifying it so that asphalt can be added, that's just going to sit there, empty. So, those are some of the quality of life things, too, that I'd want you to keep in mind as you all are considering what's an appropriate number of parking spaces for a facility this size. I just, you know, they're not going to go up, the parking spaces. They're going to take property that's already there that may have been designated for something that's residence-centered, and not just an empty asphalt parking space that probably ninety percent of the time is going to sit empty. I have some parking spaces in my facility that are never used, but they're there. And again, it's, you know, we've got fifty-four spots for ninety residents. So, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you all have. I really appreciate the task that you all have at hand. I know that you all are feeling challenged by this on what direction to go, but I think that it feels to me like it's maybe not quite as big of a problem as it's maybe being turned into. And if you've spent enough time in the industry and walked in our shoes, and been on these properties, you know, seven days a week at a times twenty-four seven, you'd have a really good appreciation for, you know, the notions that we're sharing here with regards to parking.
Thank you. Okay, is anyone else, any comments, I mean, any questions, or do you have anything else to say?
I do, I do. I'd like to continue to defend our request for forty-two parking spaces. I have Pat Schillington, who is the civil engineer for this project and for a number of other projects that we have done and have ongoing, and he would like to speak about the quality of space in this respect.
Thank you. Anytime you've got a question about parking spaces or trip generation, what, you know, in the future, you know, if you build a development, you know, how many vehicles you could see on the road, one of the most prevalent and accurate group that, or group that publishes information on that is the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And they do have a document on their facilities. They look at, they actually go out and count peak demand for parking, and it is one of the things. And for a rest home, I believe I gave a document to the planning and inspection about the, what the transportation engineer said, and it was about thirty-three, thirty-four, it might have been thirty-six spaces, that's the peak on it. Now, that kind of correlates with what the rest home operators are telling you guys, that they're actually using a little bit more than that as a margin of safety. If you look at other municipalities and counties that a common factor is point six, would put this at forty-two spaces. I will, I will say this, that there is, the way the facility is set up, we can always add more parking spaces if we need to. It's, it won't be a problem, it's kind of compartmentized, where we can, you know, always add additional spaces out there. You know, fortunately, the ground's a little flat, it's not like you're going to have to do any grading to add more parking spaces. But that's about what I have for the parking spaces. I didn't want to, I heard you say something about ten feet by twenty feet for your parking spaces. I was told by Kenneth Lindley that to use nine by eighteen, and that's a common standard. And in fact, the library that's next door is nine by eighteen, and that's a common space for a vehicle. If you were doing parallel parking, ten by twenty is a good number. But that, actually what Ken told me, and I kind of agree with him, he said that was a old standard that's really not appropriate for the type of cars we have. And if you think about it, we have, unless you have a double camp pickup, most vehicles can pull right in there. I have a double camp pickup, and if there's two cars in between it, you gotta start it in there and then back it up a little bit and align it again. But other than that, that's, I was kind of surprised by what Ken had said. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Any more comments?
Thank you, Pat. Okay. Thank you for letting us have the time to present our point, our position about the, what we know about the parking spaces. One other thing I would point out is that Gates House and Gates County, three years ago, entered into an economic development agreement whereby Gates House is a job-creating entity. And this project was budgeted based on our experience and the financial cost of the project was approved by the state whenever this UN application was filed. If, I did not know what the formula was before this meeting, but it sounds to me like we're going to have to provide, under the formula that was presented by the planning, planning department, that we'll have to provide somewhere around seventy-two parking spaces, which is very nearly double what we have budgeted for this project. This expense, this is a, this is an expense probably fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars that is really not budgeted for this development. What that's going to do is going to raise the rent on Deborah's facility. So, her rent every month that she has to pay, her lease payment, is probably going to go up by, and again, these are just round figures, but several hundred dollars a month are going to go up. And it's going to cost, it's going to cost her the opportunity to add employees. She's not going to be able to do it as rapidly, and she's not going to be able to add, to pay the wages that she would be able to pay. The thing that she can control the most by the expense of the building is going to be her labor rates. And she's going to be bound every month, she's got to pay the rent, she's got to buy the food, the power bill, and all those things are going to be constant, that's not going to change. Her biggest way to control her expenses is going to be through labor. So, that means that she's going to be more cautious about hiring, and she's going to be more cautious about giving pay raises and pay increases. So, this was a job-creating endeavor that we entered into with each other. So, I would hope that when you consider how you're going to approve the parking requirements for Gates House, that you take that into consideration as well. So, I'm through. You want to ask me some questions?
Mr. Lawrence. Thank you. Any other public comments? Do I entertain a motion to?
Mr. Lawrence, sit here, listen to this. I certainly hope that this board has at least three votes, and they may be override the planning department, because I have got my calculator on, my pencil off, I got pen and no paper, but I did have a little conference about this, and I think point nine in employees, that brings it way back below the eighty-four that y'all originally voted on. And I still think we need to up that requirement. But I don't think I've seen such a presentation of good bull. And first of all, is to move the parking places down to eight foot wide, is that what I understand?
No.
Okay, nine, nineteen, move them down. I, Henry and I can't get our truck in and get out of an eight-foot parking place. So, if somebody parks beside of us, we're going to have tens of fifty thousand dollar trucks that's going to make us mad. And I've been told this is a standard, and they come in and say, well, we can cut the size. No, you can't cut the size. And I know we all, we all, five of y'all smart enough to know that, and that was bad. Second of all, as a resident of Gates County, I know you've got to have guidelines. But it's been brought to my attention, and I agree, we don't really care about what's going on in Franklin, North Carolina, and maybe even Moyoc. But Moyoc does have more land. And when you start looking at facilities of mountain area where real estate is really prime, and you can't have the same thing in mountain areas sometimes because of absolute amount of space. But we're talking about Gates County, we're talking about something that's going to be here the rest of my life and maybe my children's lives. And y'all got a big decision to make, and it's simply over parking places. And then they tell me that we want more green, we're going to have less parking places, or make them small. Y'all got a big decision, Jack, and we've already, y'all voted for four and eighty-four, and I think you need to change the text amendment to make it like one at least, and not point nine, and do that. And this is for the citizens and residents of Gates County, that's got nothing to do with Franklin. And also, the figures they use, they use the figures they want to use. They're not looking at figures from other nursing homes or facilities that were encouraged us to make them bigger. Some of them have a far more parking places than it's been presented. They only presented half of them. And I know, and I just don't understand why they would do that. Thank you.
I would like to say that in our ordinance, the general parking size in our ordinance is ten by twenty. I could not find, I went through most of the paperwork associated with the facility when it was first being presented, and I could not find any variance that was branded for the nine by eighteen. And I'm sure that if it is, this is adopted today, that the facility would be coming back with some variance and some, to request an amendment to their approved site plan from the Board of Adjustment, because this would have to go back to the Board of Adjustment for further approval, under their special use, under their special use permit to get it amended. So, if they want to do the nine by eighteen, then they would have to do it officially as a Board of Adjustment to get that request done.
Thank you. We got clarification. Yes, any variance to the text amendment has to go back to the Board of Amendments, I mean, Board of Adjustments. But if they don't want any variance, it would stand as it was passed by the planning board.
By the Board of Adjustment, because this was initially passed by the Board of Adjustment, because it was a special use permit.
And those variants they got, they're the candy that they found in front of the building. Any other additional comments? Public, Mr. Brothers?
Madam Chairman, I would like to reiterate that this has been a very heavily debated topic for more than one session, and the planning board, I noticed before, the commissioners a time or two. You know, we certainly need to understand that everybody's in this boat together, we don't want one side of the boat rolling opposite the other side. But I do feel as a planning board member, and as a taxpayer of this county, that the planning board reacted to the request of the commissioners. At the November meeting, we did not have adequate information at that time. Our new planner had just come on, the first of that month or the month prior. We had a thirty-day window that we could come back and give recommendation back to that board to y'all, and we did that with two days to spare. When all the language was adopted, on our behalf, the planner sent it out for us to give a final check off that the language that we adopted was correct before it was presented to this board. I think that if point nine is a doable number, I don't, obviously, the board, on my perspective, had an issue with making it lower, because we had two votes to where we could not get a second. The recommendation of one point two never came to the floor for any consideration. Anything less than died for the life of a second, and I want to leave you with that thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Do I entertain a motion to come out of public hearing?
So, move.
All of this in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we are officially out of the public hearing. We will...
For discussion purposes, I would at least like to say to certainly the Gates County and certainly fellow commissioners, that we know our Gates County folks, and they do business with people that are in hospitals and nursing facilities and families, all the time.
Madam Chairman, I would say that the reason I asked the question relating here, how many of my residents, did they anticipate to be voted, that I thought that affected enough of business. So, and I think that would be true of what Commissioner Fritton was talking about. We're, I guess we're waiting on another commissioner to come back. But I would like to call Chuck Brothers to hold him again if I want to, please. Yes, sir. I just, I had a question for the board. He was chairing, his back piece was responding to the grid. Did you hear any new information today, specifically from the two ladies, I felt they did a good presentation. Did you hear anything new that your board was not presented today?
We were afforded all of the information that the engineer presented to the county. I think it was the board's position that that was taken under consideration. But at the end of the day, you know, I think it was the, that gentleman there, he came to present some facts to us, and the overwhelming fact that he presented to me that made me understand why the one point two was an issue, was because of the lighting of the, that was going to be required in a five-foot area, or something like that, I'm going off on memory. That's what stirred me to say, hey, I can understand their, their problem with what the state is mandating that they got to have based on the one point two number and the light. And that's kind of what drove me, and I think the rest of the board should come up with a lower number. I think we were presented adequate facts at both of our meetings. Obviously, the first one, we tabled until December, so we could accumulate more facts and do more homework. I physically found the definition... I physically found the definition on the DHHS website for the assisted living and we injected information that came from our prior board member, which is now your county commissioner on the far end, about a licensed facility. Other than that verbiage, it is per the state's definition. The first three topics on the text amendment we went through, boom, boom, boom. The parking was the greatest amount of discussion. I can understand their, their scenario. But I also understand me as, as a potential customer of having a family member that would go there, that who knows? I mean, if you have a snowstorm and they push up the snow and five parking spots, then we're out of here. That's going to happen. You know, look at last year when, when we had three big weather events. That takes up a space. I think all of that was done, you know, and taken into consideration by all the members. I stand by what my board has recommended to y'all that that is a, that is a doable number. And I, and I physically got an acknowledgement from the power to be that was represented to that day that that was a workable number. And that's the number that I stand by today. And that's the number that I think y'all need to adopt.
Any other comments? And I would like, that I have some experience. Yes, sir.
I think you get ready to vote on the recommendation.
Well, we've got, have a recommendation for it.
But the size of the parking spaces, I'd like to understand how we would be approved to use the nine by eighteen parking spaces that we have the site designed by.
If the text amendment goes through as currently stated, you would have the opportunity to ask, go to the Board of Adjustments and ask for a variance, not the minimum two.
Okay. What's involved in getting variance? You have to do a meeting with her. Is that something that you have to go back to your board with? Can you just take staff to say what adjustment? So the size parking spaces that we're asking to have the same size spaces that they have the county library, nine by eighteen, right? How did the county library get those approved? They do the same thing?
I wasn't here when they did the, I'll answer that question.
I don't recall the topic coming before the board. So anyway, we would like to go through the process of the nine by eighteen spaces because that's what the site is designed for. I think that there is a.
It would be the same process you went through for the county.
Okay, all right.
But you've got a variance for the county.
Is it, is it a pretty good feeling that we can get the size spaces approved? We went through the process?
That's a quasi judicial board that their, their ruling is final unless it goes to circuit court.
Okay. Well, we're trying to move forward for the size of the parking.
That's a board of, that's a board of five, isn't it? So with an offer.
Okay.
Okay. Are we at the point that for a recommendation?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to say for the board, first of all, I want to thank the planning board for the job that they've done. I think they did a good job of deliberation based on their understanding of what the situation was or is. I'd like to make the board aware that Gates House is a product of the board from two thousand nine, trying to get this facility here as economic development business in the county. Gates County is suffering from lack of economic development. I want to thank Chuck White for working with us, considering us. We went to Raleigh, Jack, current board. We worked hard. We've worked hard a long time to bring approximately five million dollar business to the county. The parking issue that we have is one that in order to keep things moving in an economic development project, many times are decisions made to keep it moving. And our then county manager, Mr. Ken Limbick, you know, whether his decision was good or bad, it was determined that we would address it. We didn't have anything in place at the time to address parking for an assisted living facility. We utilized residential support center, which is not correct, and at one point two spaces. And that's how we ended up with the eighty-four spaces. So this is an economic development issue. The company purchased three acres of land, put the facility on, with the understanding that the county has worked with them in getting the facility set up, providing whatever infrastructure we needed. And they have come up with forty-two spaces. That's not based on just what they think, but it's based on technical statistics that's been derived from engineering analysis, something that is working across the state. I might add that Down East Nursing Home has eighty beds. I confirmed that the other day. They have thirty parking spaces. There's not enough spaces, but certainly sixty is more than adequate for an eight-bed nursing facility, which require more. You go down there many times, Miss Moore, but there's only thirty spaces. If you put thirty more spaces there, I can assure you, on one of the highest days, you will have more than adequate space. I would ask the board, I would hope that the board would consider this is an opportunity. This is a time to let the citizens of Gates County know that this board is working to provide economic development for Gates County. We're working with people who are willing to take a chance on us and come and, and, and depend on the fact that we're going to try to, to work with them as well as them taking a chance on investing in us. I think that forty-two spaces is adequate. My mother's a nursing home. I visit her three or four times a week. And sometimes spaces is a little bit crowded, but there's only thirty spaces for an eight-bed facility. But here, this is an assisted living, it's not a nursing facility. You've got seventy beds and they're proposing forty-two. Being that the board is, has, has heard quite a bit from the planning board, they recommended point nine. I was at the planning board meeting, there was also a proposal of point seven-five, which would have given you six beds. I think that the board is, certainly they want to go with the forty-two. I will support that. But under the notion that there could be some issues, which I don't think there are, I believe, you've got to trust a professional sometimes. And I'm, you know, I've been on this board for six years and I can tell you right now, I've got an idea of what county, of what county commissioners does and what they did based on the fact of six years' experience. And, and I think all of you can say that, based on your number of years' experience. And so I think we really need to, to think and consider this very hard, not just to arbitrarily require over and beyond what they're asking. But work with the company. Let's go with what they have recommended. I think the text amendment, designation and description is, is good. We had to go with that. But as far as the number of spaces, I recommend that we go with what the company has asked. Let's support them. Let's show the investors that they can come to Gates County, that they do have board commissioners on their side. We want a better thing for our citizens. We want to provide jobs. We want to make this a better place to live and have a quality of life at the facility. And I, I want to say this before I close. Also, if we demand parking spaces, it's already been pointed out, you're going to take away some quality of light issues. My mother in the nursing home, she likes to come out and walk around a little bit sometimes on the grass. When you add additional parking spaces, you're going to put the lighting, you're going to have to have lighting. The state department, we got to have lighting within those parking spaces, which is going to add lighting to the bedrooms unwanted and put shades up in there. So board, I ask, let's not just take this as a personal issue, but let's look at it from both perspectives. Let's support development and, and provide a number of spaces. As far as the nine by eighteen, we can address that later. Our ordinance calls for ten by twenty. But certainly I, I recommend that we go with what the developer has presented and what they stand by statistically. And I would ask that we follow that recommendation.
Thank you. Are you asking, putting that in a form of a motion?
Well, I would put that in a form of a motion. I make a motion that we accept the text amendment as presented by the planning board with the parking spaces being forty-two in lieu of the point nine.
Motion has been made. Is there a second? I hear no second, so that motion dies.
If I may, I would like to reiterate something, Ms. Baptiste, at the beginning. Please remember that this is for all future facilities that fall under the definition of assisted living facility. I know we keep referring to Gates House, but we need to remember that it's for thinking upon to have their spaces changed as also for all future growth. And I'm not sure if it would be simpler perhaps to vote on each text recommendation as a separate.
Okay, so Article Four, the definitions.
And also, since it's going to be applied across, we need some kind of standard, like one per or three per, so that if anyone else comes in, we can have a measure instead of just saying like forty-two. Because if it's a five-bed facility, we don't want them to have forty-two parking spaces. So we need some kind of ratio to go by.
And we keep in mind that we're dealing with assisted living facilities. Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I certainly appreciate Commissioner Jordan's comments. And I know that he has a lot vested in the comments that he made and speaking with Chuck and all of that. This has been going on for some time. I really appreciate it. We did go to Raleigh and procure these certificate of need. It's been a long road to, to bring this to completion. Now, I, when this parking thing came up, I'd like for the public to know, but I received an email. And in that email, there was a list, and I'm going to guess to say there may be eight or nine facilities. In that email, they gave me the statistics that I heard from Chuck here today of, that listed, this was not just typed up, this was documentation with it that said, name the facilities, name the number of beds, name the parking spaces. These were, these were facilities that were already in place and, and told that they weren't having any issues, whatever. I also, when I received that the next day, I rode out here to the nursing home out here that already exists down east, counted the number of parking spaces. Did not know how many beds they had, but I knew with four wings that they had a considerable number. So, you know, that, that led me to, the numbers I was seeing in the email had to have some validity to it because we had a facility right here in our county. I checked a couple of other facilities. I do want to say that if I had anything to do with it down here at Dollar General, they have serious parking issues down there every day, every night. And I wish that, I wish we had the ability to go now and say, we're going to do something about this. But guess what? We don't. It's built. I remember the comment that the lady at Dollar General made when we talked about landscaping, when we talked about parking and certain things like that. And somebody made a comment about, you know, rules and this and that. And she was emphatic, we're going to do the minimum. We're going to do the minimum. And that really struck a chord with me. I believe this operation here coming to the county is a great thing and I really appreciate everything they're doing. I did not get a second because I just believe that forty-two is too much. I believe that eighty-four is too much. Henry and I met with the county manager, he's been here maybe ten days. And from that conversation, I was really prepared to, to feel that sixty-five was out of the number. I commented earlier that I think our planning board had done a good job. They came up with point nine and then the other forty employees. And I think we'll roughly come down to a total of seventy, somewhere, seventy-five something maybe, whatever. But I am, I became the county commissioner, ran for office because of economic development. That was the, the main driving point when I ran for office. And I want to see things grow here. I want to be a user-friendly planning board. I want us to have a user-friendly board of commissioners. I want us to be user-friendly citizens to the degree that when somebody says they're going to come, that we rally around them and don't push them away, that we don't create unnecessary burdens for them. I want us to be a county that when they look at our camera, when they go on our website, they say, you know, they're, they're being very conscientious and very friendly to consumers. That's a place that I want to consider. So with all those comments in mind, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the criteria to the text amendment that was presented to us from the planning board.
And your reference is to the definition of terms.
The definition and the terms.
Okay, a motion has been made by Article Four, definition of terms, section four point zero two, words and definitions, eight point one, assisted living facility. And that is a licensed facility licensed pursuant to General Statute, Chapter thirteen, one thirty-one D, as defined by North Carolina General Assembly. So that is the part that he has made a motion that we approve. Do I hear a second?
Sir.
Okay, a second has been made to, for the definition of assisted living facility. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of, certainly the definition that the planning board has brought for under section four point zero two, words and terms and definitions, eight point one, assisted living. All those in favor by definition, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the definition has been approved. The second part of the recommendation from our planning board is Article Seven, district regulations of bike table of permitted use. district regulations by table of permitted use. A charge for permitted use under help section by the planning board. Do I have a motion concerning Article seven, table of permitted uses?
On the planning board, I'd like to ask Ms. Baptiste to, if you will, just give us some enlightenment on why we use special use under C1, or why the board decided to treat special use to as a permitted use.
Well, when I recommended this to the planning board, I used for guidance nursing homes where they're allowed. So this pretty much mirrors where the nursing homes are allowed in the county currently according to the general purposes.
So a nursing home is a special use under C1?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do entertain a motion that we accept the district regulations for table of permitted uses for assisted living facility?
So moved.
A motion has been made, and I have a second.
Second.
A second, any discussion? Okay, we'll vote on Article seven, district regulations, table of permitted uses, the assisted living facilities, if they included under by table, as the chart shows. All those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, nine, Article number nine, provisions for use allied as special use, section nine point zero three, additional restrictions imposed on certain special uses. That's assisted living facilities that be licensed by the state, General Statute, Chapter one thirty-one D. And Part A says, the site plan with the number of residential units shall be submitted with the special use permit application, and B, the projected number of residents and support staff. Do I, I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
A motion is to be made.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those who are in favor of the additional restrictions imposed on certain special uses, nine point zero three dash twenty-seven, assisted living facilities, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that is approved. Article ten, off-street parking and off-street loading requirements, minimum parking standards for the assisted living, the parking requirements as recommended by the planning board, point nine, point nine tenths of spaces per bed, and one space per every two employees on the largest ship. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion has been made, and I hear a second.
Second.
Second has been duly noted. Any discussion?
I would like, in addition to what's there, in addition to what has been presented to us, very in-depth, and also from Commissioner Jordan's comments, all appropriate. One thing that I think we need to keep in mind, or at least pay attention to, because as I understand from Mr. White and others, that additional parking spaces could be made, but I don't know that anyone's really thought about the economic advances that would be made. If this was to be done in five years, how much water would cost? Even though it's brought up, it would cost more at this stage. But if you needed to add additional parking spaces, what would that be in five years as of today? So just comments.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Since we have a motion at the second, the governor says, look, I would ask the board to consider adding that the parking space requirement would be nine by eighteen to authorize that, considering that if the Board of Justice does not approve the nine by eighteen, you've got a ten by twenty, seven spaces, you're going to be taking up quite a bit more square footage. And basically, that's what this is basically approving is, is one space per bed at ten by twenty, which is not in their current plan. I would ask if we, when we made a motion on the second, if you considered adding a parking space at least nine by twenty to that motion.
But the only problem, this is for all assisted living places nigh and in the future. I mean, I think the change of parking size, that would have to be done in an old measure. Not tack on to this. That is my thoughts.
Well, I mean, you could do it, you know, obviously, we're in this because of the non-dupes issue that has come up. But there again, that's a recommendation to try to be a little bit more business-friendly to move forward with this, because they're going to have to jump into some moves. You've got to realize, if you've got seven spaces, you're talking two additional feet on each side, and plus two additional feet on in the back, seven. If you multiply that times seven, you're probably, probably what, close to five square foot additional space that you're going to need to accommodate parking. So that's something that they're going to have to deal with. And we could actually take care of that in this and give, you know, give them a little bit more leeway in moving forward to this. And you can still, in your ordinance, have a ten by twenty, well, we could address that in another time. But, you know, we're not going to have a lot of assisted living facilities, even though the definition allows on a smaller scale something to be called assisted living facility. And this is not going to be an issue of magnitude to talk about now. What do you have, what do you thought, sir, of the board?
Do we know what the, do we know what the dimensions of parking spaces at Dollar General? Or maybe it's not even?
It's moved. That's what you were running to, we don't know what's on the book. And if we're going to ignore that ordinance on a period of null, I think we have to have our special, a nice one of that in another public period to get started on it, something totally different. It's in our books, and engineer said he hasn't seen it in our ordinance, it's in there. It should not have been subscribed anywhere.
I, for one, am in favor of letting the, this is my motion, let the motion remain as it is. And I am concerned Chuck's got a bit of comment out there, probably to a library, get nine by eighteen parking, if that's the case. I don't know that to be the case, but I bet Chuck does. So I'm requiring to read my motion as it is. Commissioner Jordan?
Okay, are we ready to nail comments? Okay, the motion before us, Article ten, off-street parking and off-street loading requirements, section ten point two, minimum parking requirements, assisted living facility, point nine spaces per bed, one space for every two employees on the largest ship. All those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is approved. Okay, thank you, all of you who have come and made comments about that. It's certainly an item that has been debated for several months. So I think that it is a compromise between the ordinance in the beginning with, which was one one-two, and brought it down to point nine. Okay, moving to old business. First item on the agenda on the old business is proclamation for the historical significance of the Chona Indians. If you remember, in December, a proclamation was given to us. We'll just be nice to take a break for about five minutes. Okay, we'll take a break for five minutes.
Thank you.
Where's Bill? He's over there. I'm kind of like, first, I'm sort of cat, I'm first yellow. Okay. Okay. Thank y'all for the light on that. Thanks for doing this all good, get up the stretch, and get some people moving around. Going to the old business, we have a proclamation for the historical significance of the Chona Indians. In December, if you remember, a proclamation was presented to us, and there were some questions concerning some of the comments or the whereas is on that. And we have a new proclamation before us today. Ms. Rynch, do you have any comments on this?
Basically, this is just recognizing the historic significance of the Chona Indians by stating that we understand that they did have a reservation in Gates County, and that they attended the first Indian school that was founded by Edward Marshburn, and that Gates County is proclaiming historical significant recognition to the Chona Indians in Gates County.
Okay, I see Mrs. Javison's here today. Would you like to speak to this?
Yes. Thank you. Natalie, I appreciate you.
My word for God. Thank you.
I appreciate your support, you know, whatever you all have decided as far as the recognition, at least of the historical significance of the Chona Indians. What I would like to see, though, is this pretty much rather than being stated in past tense terms, maybe bring it more into present tense, as far as recognizing maybe the Indians that are here now, if you're able to. There is one sentence, and I know there's some of the research that you probably, you know, just to stay with the legal boundaries, would need to be able to see. But at least to mention, there was one sentence that wasn't there before, you know, both the November and December meeting, that stated where the descendants of said Indians have been documented through various land sales deeds, historical research. If you could just change the wording to can be, that way it would sort of, put that back in the proclamation, change the wording to can be, and that's pretty much a generic statement without saying, well, we know you, that you have been. Because we can be, but it appears that the proclamation as it is written now is pretty generic based on historical facts, more so than what is presently occurring.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It looks like Natalie may have something there from that meeting.
These were the ones that were presented to us, and then the one that had been adopted, or the one that Mr. Jordan and I had looked over and had some questions about some of the wording, and that's what these two documents are. And this is the document based upon some conversation I had with very, very rich person, state bureau of Indian affairs.
Did you read that sentence that she was, to us, if you might?
The sentence that, it says, whereas the descend, what it used to say, whereas the descendants of said Indians have been documented through various land sales deeds and historical research, you are requesting that that be added in. It says, the descendants of said Indians are documented?
Can be.
Can be.
Or are documented, same thing, are or can be, where then maybe putting you all in position to say you don't have, have been.
And that is one of the reasons, after speaking with Mr. Richardson, state bureau of Indians, that it was taken out, because we had not verified anything. So that's why that sentence was taken out as written. He was explaining to me that there is a process that you have to go through, genealogy and everything, and since we've not done that, I did not feel it was in the best interest of the county to put that statement in there.
Have been, and can be, I don't think, it just isn't out of language, but I understand that, but as far as girl's position, it maybe works with state recognition.
Correct.
So that would, and of course, state recognition guidelines are not nearly as stringent as even federal recognition guidelines. So you're here at a county level, you know individuals, whereas on a state level, you pretty much have to give a lot of history in order to prove that you existed as a community S unit, and a governing unit. And when you go for federal recognition, you will go even more in-depth with that, and have to provide a lot more evidence. So each level requires different, or has different criteria. On a county level, your citizens are here among you. So you don't necessarily have to go through the same petition process that you go through, and you don't have a county bureau of Indian affairs, but you do have a state bureau of Indian affairs. Now, once you petition at the state level, then, you know, of course, we have to provide a lot of communication, and, you know, that's forthcoming, but we would like county recognition because there are certain things that are fact. The fact that Gates County did have one of the first reservations in the United States, and certainly the first reservation in North Carolina, granted by the United States government. Second fact is, there are chief men, they're listed in various land deeds, document sales, that are in your, the documents there in the courthouse, that you can pull up, you can, so you can trace our genealogy back to there. But those are right here in the county that you know to be fact. And, you know, historically, you know about Chairman, about the local history here, so you know the significance of the Chona Indians, but you also know, or we know, that the Chona Indians are still here, even though the reservation, as a formal reservation unit, you know all that, this is.
Where was that? I was going to ask, sorry, is current reads where has the Chona Indians had a reservation in Gates County, North Carolina? And there... in Gates County, North Carolina, and their descendants, is that, would be added to that or would be have a different whereas?
This was in the original document, it was a different whereas, yes.
The first two certainly can be factual statements, um, that are generally recognized in a variety of sources, um, throughout the state, Gates County, and throughout signal in Carolina, for a country, about the reservation here and the school that was established here. Um, and of course, in our pressure, these also have these who make reference to the Chona Indians selling land and listing their names. Uh, and so, you know, we know that they were here, they had land, and they sold the land. Um, and, you know, I mean, we can say they were, I don't know. It's probably is those, how do we make the connection between those in the seventeen hundreds and twenty-fourteen?
With the genealogy.
Or with the genealogy.
If, if the genealogy, if, if we knew that the genealogy, um, existed, and I'm saying this without, so I'm gonna say it again, we, if I knew that the genealogy existed and there were descendants here, there could be another whereas, whereas the Chona, descendants of the Chona Indians continue to reside in Gates County. Now, I don't know the, the genealogy, but would that, would something like that suffice to what you're trying to establish? Because you're trying to make it current.
Well, even to say that descendants of, um, the Chona Indians can be documented, and that's a factual statement, because if you're Chona, you can be, otherwise, if you can't, you're not Chona. So it's pretty generic and you're not really saying that I'm Chona, but you are saying that Chona, um, or the descendants can be traced, um, or documented through various land sales deeds and historical research.
The way you just said that, does that satisfy what you're trying to, to get into the document?
Well, if, that would be fine if that meets your approval. Um, certainly, I would like for you to recognize us as a Chona tribe, but if you need the genealogy, you need the research, um, then this would be acceptable. Because that statement would be fact, if you're Chona, if you can be, your lineage is documented, or you are descendants of those people that existed in the land sales.
Madam Chairman, oh, I'm sorry. Madam Chairman, I've got a question for the county manager too. Did you mention Chief Richardson of the Hollowaw Tribe?
No, this is Gregory Richardson, who's with the State Bureau of Indian Affairs. And he, I had a long conversation about various issues that we had discussed last time about how should we proceed, if we needed documentation, and based upon the conversation, some of which I did not feel I need to share in public, um, because he shared, you know, lots of things about genealogy and things like that, about how it's documented, but I'm standing by what I present because of conversations with him.
I understand. I have, uh, no Chief Richardson from Hollowaw Tribe and from the Indian Affairs meetings, and, and who they recommend. Would, uh, would your group have, have a problem in contacting them and seeing what the Indian tribes that are already recognized and the reservations in North Carolina?
I know Gregory Richardson very well, um, and I also know the state criteria quite well. State criteria is different from the county criteria, uh, which is different from the federal criteria. Um, you all do not have a Indian, um, a bureau of Indian affairs here in this county, and I don't know any individual county that does. Um, you base, I guess, your recognition on your personal knowledge of the Indians that are here, um, and based on the research or based on the history of the area. So in other words, if you recognize the county and you've lived here all your life, most people typically know there are certain communities that have been pretty much set apart and have been recognized, um, as Indian. Attorney Philip Godwin knew that several years back, um, or I think it was his, I can't remember his age, it may have been. He knew that several years back, um, during the time when they made application, um, for, for certain Indian, um, recognition. So he went to the local Indians here even though the Chona tribe had disbanded, so to speak, due to the climate, colonization, and other things that had taken place over the last several hundred years. But you typically know those people in the community that, you know, say, oh, yes, we know they're Indian, um, and he went, he reached out to help them during that period of time. This was back in the early nineteen hundreds.
I see that in the first sentence, excuse me for interrupting you, had a reservation in Gates County? Was it documented where that reservation was?
Yes.
Only half and squared and then a square.
That is what, what are we talking about?
Yes.
Right.
And, and then the attended first Indian school in North Carolina.
See, these statements that are listed as, as they were listed are fact. It is fact that we have one of the first reservations in, in the United States here in Gates County. It is fact that the first Indian school was started by Edward Mashburn, um, or Mashburn, um, back during that time. That's fact.
Where was that, that school?
That's, yeah, it's, we're not sure if it's between minutes three and seven thirty or exactly, but it's somewhere close or on the reservation. The reservation initially twelve square miles, we know where that is. And you can look back at old maps and you can see where the Chona villages were actually eliminated. Um, so these things are just generic facts that you can't state and just sort of try to put it, bring it to the present as a descendant of a Chona, uh, chief.
County manager, would you make a note that you take a look at this and see how you can?
As I'm stating, I stand by what I present. This up to the commissioners to sign, and they would like to accept Ms. James's recommendation to include other information.
I have one more question, and you've alluded to it twice. You said that the qualifications are not stringent at county level, it's a state level. Are the Chona Indians, do they have a charter or with the state or federal, any of them?
Well, that's something that we're pursuing, um, and of course, those guidelines are a lot more stringent. Actually, I should back up to say, I'm not even sure that most counties have criteria for recognizing.
I'm trying to say, I don't think so.
I, I don't think there's any.
I was just curious if they had, does, approved designation or charter with the higher entities is what I was.
Well, we basically, we, that's something we're pursuing, and we will get state recognition, um, and we will pursue what we need to pursue. Of course, we have tribes that have been pursuing a federal recognition for seventy-plus years, you know, you have, look at the Lundy's. And they have yet to get federal recognition because the guidelines are far more strict than the state. So you have criteria at each level, but here we're asking for, you know, the recognition at the county level, which is, um, a good place to start. Of course, we've been, we're pursuing.
We want to be helpful, we want to be, uh, we want to be factual.
Proper.
And meaningful.
I think this is a start, um, in the process of moving forward, you would need additional, something additional, I think you could probably bring that back to the board, but this certainly gives recognition to the Chona tribe as it currently exists. And, uh, like I said, I, I believe that you said in the passage, you're pursuing certain, uh, additional recognitions and probably potential businesses, uh, they rank the county as a result of being, uh, recognized in the Chona tribe. And so, you know, this is a start, and in the process of moving forward, if there was something additional here by the county, I think that at that time it could probably be more towards, and we can address it at that time.
Yeah, if you all, I mean, we would be happy with the proclamation, you know, which is a minor change that we've said today, or if you don't feel comfortable, you know, you'd like to go ahead and, and do that, but it would be nice to be able to turn that into the present, um, because these are generic, well-known facts that you can expand to it just by going, you know, to, to land records, or perhaps even the history book, or local history book.
Any other comments?
No, Madam Chairman, I do see this gentleman standing.
I see you.
If he'd like to speak or?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Doug Parrish, I'm here probably the first time that we presented this.
I can't sort of remember you.
And, uh, I just wanted to add a couple of things. Um, when I, when I read the proclamation that you wrote, I thought this was a good start, you know, at some point later on, it turned to be built on that, which I thought was fine. Um, but I did want to address some of the, well, a couple of comments that were made. The Chona Indians are probably the most well-documented group in the state, period, bar none. Um, the descendants in this group now are the only group, other than the Cherokee, recognized or not, that can show their descent from these people, from these people with chief men of the Chona tribe, the only one. Um, out of all of the state-recognized tribes here, for instance, you mentioned Hollowaw Suponey Gregory, I know Greg well, worked with him quite, quite a bit. I've been researching the different tribes in the state over twenty years. Um, I've contributed to books on, on different Indian groups, um, and a lot of the work that the Chona have now I've done. There's nothing you can't ask me, but I can't answer regarding the Chona tribe in terms of its history, in terms of, of different people that were here in this county. Very well documented, consistently, all to, you know, into the nineteen hundreds, very well. Indian town, I mean, the, the section of land that's here in Gates, a lot of people may not be really familiar with that term, but it was a pretty popular term back in the early nineteen hundreds. An Indian town was, was where a lot of the descendants still lived in the nineteen hundreds, and which is why, how the, I forget the, the term, the.
The Gavman.
The Gavman family, they knew this. I mean, most of the people here knew this, they knew these people. Um, that's why he helped them apply to these different, uh, actually, Indian benefits in the early nineteen hundreds. Um, it, it was no doubt who these people were, there's no doubt. Um, anybody whose family has been here since the, you know, eighteen hundreds, I mean, everybody here knows anybody. They know who, you know, the families that descend from the Indians, but, um, the state, um, the, the tribes that are currently, except for one, um, on the state commission of Indian affairs, all different groups, um, one thing you may not know is none of them went through any process to get recognized by the state. Um, it, it, to me, it seems like it's a very easy thing to come up with a criteria when you don't have to do it. There, there's a lot more to this. Um, it's a lot more.
Excuse me for interrupting you, but I do have a question.
Yes.
Before I forget, and as you say that they applied for benefits through the American Indians.
Yes.
Did, did they receive those benefits?
Um, they didn't receive the benefits because they were trying to get them as Cherokee, which you can't. Yes, they were Indian, but they, see, the benefits were only offered to Cherokee Indians, and they were trying to try to get those benefits, the, uh, the firm deal. And so you can't, he knew they were Indian, so he figured, you know, I mean, the word Cherokee, at, at some point, it became generic. The word Cherokee just kind of meant Indian. And I, I think that most families, um, that would say that they were Indian descent, that's the first thing they can say, say, well, I think my grandmother's Cherokee, even though their grandmother or whoever was not Cherokee. It just became a, a pretty unilateral term with being Indian, and so, um, which is how you get that confusion. Yes, they were Indian, they definitely weren't Cherokee, they were Chona, um, which too often.
Have Chona ever been able to receive that benefit as American Indian?
Well, you don't, you don't get benefits because you're a Canadian, and Cherokee receives those benefits because they were removed from their land. You know, they, they were moved away from the land they had, so it was more so like, because of what we did, you, you get these benefits.
Let's, let's do a little wordsmith. That's what I was trying to do forty minutes ago. Let's do a wordsmith. How about, all right, we have the first whereas, whereas the Chona Indians had a reservation in Gates County, North Carolina, and whereas the Chona Indians attended the first Indian school in North Carolina founded by Edward Mashburn, and whereas the Chona Indians have petitioned the commissioners for current recognition, which current descendants, state can be verified by land, uh, sales, and deeds.
Yes, that, that sounds good. We have the deeds, the deeds are right over here, and now they're wrong. We know who the people are, there's no doubt about that.
Okay, and what this does is, is acknowledge that back there, petitioned board, uh, for current recognition, which they say can be verified by land sales deeds.
Um, Mr. Jordan? No, I, I was just thinking that, I was trying to think how to, this way to phrase this. Um, certainly, there's no denying that the Chona's were here, we know that they're Indian deeds office, but we all, but there's got to be some continuity or genealogy linking the, these here to these in twenty-fourteen. So, you know, I can go along with, we can recognize that the descendants, uh, of Chona Indians can, that genealogy can be, um, but I can't, we can't, it's hard to say who is a Chona and who's not.
But we're not, we're not saying, all we're saying is that we have to petition.
Read your statement here.
All right, this is, whereas the Chona Indians have petitioned the commissioners for current recognition, which current descendants, state can be verified by land sales deeds. So they're petitioning us, um, for current recognition by current descendants, well, they are current descendants, which state that it can be verified by land sales deeds. We're not, we're not verifying any, and we're basically stating that, that's what is happening today, we're petitioning us.
And I think.
Based on.
The Cherokee example.
I think even more basic than that, um, the people who signed those deeds are Chona Indians. If it, and it says it on the deeds, even as far as acknowledging those people as Chona tribe were here, is, is good, good enough, because we're filling rest later.
Was that, was that, Madam Chairman, then an attachment in relevance to the proclamation of recognition?
Well, I, I think we need to kind of avoid the recognition part, because we're not in the business of recognizing and determining who's what. Why, because you could be Mahari, you could be Chona, you could be, um, you know, there's a whole variety of groups that. know, just a variety of groups that, of Native Americans that are right. Um, but I think what you said to just the end, that, um, the...
Chaukino headman.
Yes.
The ones that are listed are Chaukino Indians, and from there, I mean, that basically is, gives us all the meaning.
Okay, the Chaukino headmen were...
Can I get a clarification? You said it gives you what you need, and what do you mean by that thing?
Okay, meaning, we know we can descend by, so it's the same thing.
And will you use this document for any other reason?
No. It, it really can't be used, is, what this is symbolic for us, it's a proclamation, it's not legislation, it's just a symbolic act.
Will it be used in your application for the state Bureau of Indian Affairs?
The state, no. Or federal. Or federal.
Or federal, please say.
Or federal, no. Uh, uh, I know she was referring to before, everybody has their own criteria, a certain way of doing it, and, uh, for instance, if you're a state-recognized tribe, you apply for federal recognition, they don't care if you're federally recognized, uh, state-recognized at all, it makes no difference to them, you're just going to give them what they need, you can't do that. Um, there was a tribe that's recently been denied recognition that, um, that applied, that it state-recognized, it doesn't help you at all, because you have to meet the criteria. It's just, it's more of a, a thing where you're, it's a symbolic recognition that the people that, whose community you come from, no, it's just, um, just recognizing people for what they are, but it doesn't really give you anything in addition for that.
Okay, um, would you state your, what your statement you made about the headman?
Um, if the, I forgot the terminology. Um, the Chaukino Indians can be documented through their tribal headman, which is John Robbins, it was a, a list of...
Benance.
Benance, it was a Basley family and, um, and Horder family.
What was her last name?
Horder. Uh, it's sometimes called height, depending on who, who sent this person was at the road.
Okay, um, why does the pleasure board?
Madam Chairman, I'm not chairman, I'll, uh, I'm prepared to make a motion to, uh, approve or adopt the proclamation for the Chaukino significance of the Chaukino Indians, um, as written with the additional statement under item two, which would come out of three. As I stated before, whereas the, um, current Chaukino Indian descendants of Gates County have petitioned commissioners for current recognition, I might add, as a tribe, uh, which, Clark has said, the state can be verified by land sales and deeds. However, we've got a motion to, or approval by the board.
Okay, a motion has been made, is our second. That being in the second, that motion dies?
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Um, this is initially Gates County, I'd like to be very clear, and I know you do, and I know, I know the board does, but what I'm hearing is, uh, and figuring from this board, is that we want to be extremely factual. If you have authority, you're supposed to use that authority correctly. Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we tabled this, uh, this proclamation so that we can be properly satisfied and address it at our February, first meeting in February.
Okay, a motion has been made to table the motion until February. Do I have a second?
Second, a motion, I'd like to add, uh, given the warrant from, uh, what Madam Chairman thinks, is that they also provide documentation, this mentioned, from both the rest of the deeds office and the banks. We certainly recognize Chaukinos, we know it in books, we know it in, in history, but we don't know, uh, the rest of it.
Okay. Can I make a statement today? Um, when you provide genealogical records, it becomes a matter of public record, and every tribe that I know of generally, while they're pursuing any sort of recognition, um, particularly on a federal level, protects their information. If you need the genealogy, we would be, and may I be willing to accept even a proclamation of the historical significance of the Chaukino Indians who are in the county, to preserve the integrity of our genealogy. Um, because I don't want to compromise the genealogy, the results, um, or actually the factual information that we have, just something that's dear to every Indian trial that's pursuing recognition. As I stated, there are different criteria for the state, which is nowhere near as stringent for the federal government, and for the federal government, you will have to provide extensive genealogy that the state does not pretty much require. Um, and when I say extensive genealogy, you have to go family by family, that's not something that we want to compromise the integrity of at this point. So if, you know, if you can at least recognize Chaukino Indians, that there were, was Chaukino tribe here, and historical significance and historical basis, uh, here in the county, and the fact that, you know, there was the first reservation, then we would be happy with that. If you can't at least acknowledge the Chaukino chief men, um, without going, and, and even to say the current Chaukino Indians who are still living here in the county and surrounding the county, um, if that's acceptable to you.
Well, I think I have Commissioner Jordan, Commissioner Fowles, and, um, I think we all want to get it right.
I understand.
And, um, I also think that, um, we might need, if, if we want to add a sense, we'd need to think about it and not just do it spur of the moment. Um, so there is a motion on, in front of us tonight, to table the motion, it has been made and seconded, um, so let, let us deal with that. Uh, any other comments? Okay, motion for us, it's to table the proclamation until February, so that we can be sure that we have accurate statements, or factual statements. All those in support of that idea, say aye.
Aye.
Kind of, all opposed. So we're going to table it to, just to make sure we get it right. Because we certainly want to recognize our Indian heritage, it is a very important part of the state's history, and something that we're very, very proud of, so we want to do everything we can to be supportive.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, can there be a contact question, can we at least review this before it comes back?
I'm sure that we can get our court to send you a, uh, the proposed proclamation.
Something to be dialed on and then we... Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, anytime, you have my phone numbers.
Please, thank you.
Okay, moving on, EMS, um, contract, I think was the EMS person to see him.
Well, he's coming up.
I'm sorry, I was just knowing.
Well, he's coming up, this is based upon the contract that's currently in place for all of our departments in the county, and this is the contract that we discussed that is needed between EMS and the counties for them to provide services in order for them to then fulfill, or for them to fill out the application for the NCACC Medicaid reimbursement program.
Okay, so if you have any questions, I'll apologize. It's, uh, Stormy, Stormy. Why does it say Stormy? I think I told you. Okay.
Manager Roundtree said what I was going to say pretty much, so if you all have any questions, um, the reason that we need the contract is to even go forward with the application, we have to have a contract, that's the first step. If, if we don't, then the application will never even be looked at, and it's a very expensive application. And we're time-sensitive in the fact that that application is due by February the 28th, and it also has to be signed by you all, so my hope is that we can secure this contract today, before with the application, and be on the agenda in February to get your signature on that application, um, to be submitted to the NCACC, um, for funds this year. And then whenever those funds come back, they, they come back through your office, that's why there's verbiage in that contract the way that it is.
And Sandy has, but this, this is the outstanding contract of the...
This is the one that's with, that county currently has with the fire department.
Oh, file.
That the county commissioner's approved, I'm not sure, when they, Billy might notice that he's in the fire department, this is the same, it is not the standard contract that the county has when we did construction projects. I know Billy Lynn also worked.
Right, we started with, we started with the fire department contract that's in place currently, and then we modified it as needed to meet an EMS requirement. So it was, the foundation of it is the same contract that you have with, with fire, it's just some additions to, to meet the EMS side of it.
Questions?
Is there a, a certain line item to, uh...
Not at this time, I've no, I'm not, but this is something I've, I've reabsolutely can do, but I'm not really involved really up to the point yet of having anything in the budget. Once, once it goes to the NCACC and we get some really small information, we can set it up as a pass through.
And we have all pass-throughs.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, we can set it up that way, it wouldn't be an issue.
Okay, this, this involves no kind of money going through the rest of the squad at all.
No, sir, there is verbiage in there about the money that you all currently give us, but the money that we're going after with the NCACC is money that, that Gates County has never, ever gotten in the past 13 years since the program's been existed. And we're, we're chasing dollars, some dollars, some very significant dollars, from what I've been told, that would not come from the county, and we're just asking that it be passed through if we're...
And we love for you to chase dollars from outside sources.
We can let you speak in order to do that. I, I did want to point out, Sandy, you might want to see this, on page 151, fourth, second paragraph, we just used the phrase "pass-through money," which means dollars coming from somebody else's in that. The second paragraph says, "The county agrees to provide additional funding according to FEMA, to current FEMA guidelines to the department." That's probably mandated anyway, I probably...
Well, that's...
The rea, the reason for that paragraph is during Hurricane Irene, we up-staffed at the request of the emergency management office to be able to, to answer the heavier load of calls, and we were not eligible for FEMA funding because we did not have a contract saying that if the county managers and the county recognizes the need for us to up-staff, that we'll do that, and so that is piggybacked in this, so that in the future, we can also meet.
Okay, and, and when I say according to FEMA guidelines, I think it basically means it's mandated either.
So it's a disaster.
Yeah. Anyway, I just want to point that out.
And we might just want to make sure, I know that one of the issues we had with FEMA is we talked about, if we got to our money, it would go to you, and they, they were very clear that the contract can't just be, if there's FEMA money, it goes to them, I think that's why it's worded this way, that the county agrees to provide additional funding if they provide additional services, and it's not dependent upon FEMA funding, and that's where the, that specification is, I think that's why it's worded that way.
And that, that is, thank you for reminding me, that is what Billy told me, we did talk about this again the other day, and that's why it says excessive two staff crews, longer than 12 consecutive hours.
So that sort of tells us what the maximum would be. At the beginning, it says the county will provide, so that right there at the end tells us what it would be.
How long those people have to have worked at least?
It sets a, it sets a criteria for, for that money to start coming to us, and it has to be worded that way, like she said, because FEMA, it can't say, only if you get FEMA money, will you give it to us, it has to say that if you require us to go above and beyond what's normal for us, that you'll pay us. We're chasing again the FEMA money that would be coming, but it can't be worded that way, or FEMA won't recognize them, because they don't want you to say, if you get FEMA money, you'll give it to us. They want you to rec, they want you to say...
Somebody else has got skin in the game.
Right, if you ask us to do something beyond what we normally do, you will...
Only in a...
But, but this is why I was to think, if you reimburse that FEMA, it was, all right. Okay, any, um...
What, what about if we said, the county agrees to provide additional funding for the current FEMA guidelines to the department in the event of a declared emergency? It kind of sounds like, uh, any emergency, if you determine it's an emergency, even though the county has not declared, uh, that, you know, the county would be responsible for providing those funds, but it's declared, uh, and that's what we did, is, uh, you know, we recognize whether, uh, situations are emergencies or whether they're not.
So I'm, I'm... I, I provide insurance history. If it's a federal disaster, they have to declare it to get federal funds, if the state wants to declare it, so you get state dollars, the states don't declare it. So it'll be declared by, I, I don't think we, we don't ever have to declare it, we just have to provide funds, so I don't think there's any, like, when it says FEMA guidelines, I think that might address the declaring of the event. I think actually, Henry, I think that may prevent us from reacting when the state declares something, we'd just be subjected to the FEMA guideline.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that whoever the emergency is declared, the county is in agreement with it, I mean, um, there's, there's situations where the state doesn't declare an emergency, it's local, and you're going to have, you know, it may be a, a fire issue, let's say a supply in one of the neighboring counties, and, uh, the EMS may feel that, hey, you know, we, we want to act out, but the board may feel it wasn't a necessity, I mean, you call Gates County, what about pass-throughs, or whatever, I mean, uh, there needs to be some agreement, but anyway, I, I don't, she does just take the point, I just thought I'd point that out, if, if the board is not in agreement with that, I don't have a problem with that. I, I just want to make sure that we are in agreement, that an emergency situation comes up, it may not be state, it may not be federal, but if it's an emergency, it sounds like that, uh, we agree to do full.
What do you mean, we'll see this again, we see this every year?
The contract.
Yes.
I believe you worded it as...
Perpetual.
Billy and I came up with it, it's perpetual, unless it needs to be addressed, absolutely, if, if it needs to come before the commissioners every year, then that, that can happen, but we didn't word it, we didn't put a timeline on it, because if there's no reason to come back next year, then, then absolutely not tie your time up on something.
One thing I do see is the discussions of current allocation, being evaluated, the training department and county manager, but that allocation actually has to be approved by the board in the annual budget every year, so I don't know if that order might need to be reviewed, I know it's something that you would come in and meet with the county manager, it would go as part of the post-budget, but the board actually has to approve that allocation every year. Is, that's first paragraph, second page, that's, that's what I want to know.
Well, to, to address the, would we...
Well, to, to address the, would we see it in, in the third paragraph on page 151, it says to be terminated. And they said we wanted to bring it back to the board for some reason. We could say, hey, we want to terminate this agreement based on those stipulations, you know, just simply so we can bring it back for rebanding or something. Well, I agree with Sandy. I made another as well, that while any increase would be discussed with the Department of County Management, the ultimate approval would be to the board. And any increases should be discussed with the board, specifically not just put in the budget without an acknowledgement that we've got some changes here. So I would, I would recommend that, that it also would just be unapproved by the board. How about, how about your timeline? Do you have a timeline?
Yes, sir. We've got to have the application before you get the February meeting in order to have it in the NCACC's office by the, by the deadline of the end of February.
Well, I think that first paragraph on page 151 that Commissioner Jordan just alluded to, I do think we have to have the board's Commissioner's approval of any increase. It just says the department and the county manager, it has to come before us.
And we have it approved by the board.
And approved by the board. That's just a simple add-on.
If I may ask, Sandy, Sandy, you've got the document. I agree with the board on the first paragraph. Second paragraph, haven't held it there for a few minutes. Are we okay there?
You know, my only thing, this is an agreement that will be here after you, after, you know, whatever. And there may need to be something in the states that either the County declared the emergency or the County actually requested it, because it doesn't anywhere say, I mean, it pretty much says that if they, if anybody decides they need additional staffing, then we're required to fund it. But it may be something even as simple as at the request of the County or the County declares whatever, just something stating that the County actually requested this additional staffing or these additional services. It's at the County's discretion, not theirs.
I agree. I think that we need to put, because certainly if it's a national disaster, FEMA's going to declare it. If it's state, the governor will be declaring. But if it's something local, we need to make sure that we have the say-so before.
We agree.
Yeah, we will be agreeing, agree with.
So are you saying, and we're declared before the word of March, it's in the second sentence of the second paragraph?
Yes, I agree with that.
And at the end, they, you know, as of a declared emergency.
Just what he ended up doing.
It might have been declared, it had to be declared by the county.
And that the county's actually requested those additional services, because just because we declared an emergency doesn't mean it's been required to do additional services. It depends on what's, you know, what the situation is.
A declared emergency by the county.
I think that is needed.
Would declare just, it triggers insurance, certain things with insurance companies too. Was it the declared emergency? And that's a trigger. And what, Billy's not here, what's gonna happen on any emergency that comes through the County Manager's office, what action if you take it, they're gonna call the chairman and say, this is what we've done. What is directed, and the chairman will concurre with, whether or not we go along with that, whatever. That's what they do, the government and the chairman. So it's, it's standard procedure. I mean, you don't, you don't take action unless you do a conference with the board, with the board chair. It's not like you declared it in a flood, you just declared it in a state of emergency. It's an emergency, right. And that, in concurrence, from the board's chair, or the board forward, will make that declaration. And if it is declared, then the County would support what's being requested. So can we, so County Management, can we recruit this thing so we can give them what they need today?
We can just make those recommendations to, to insert those, Melissa can type it up if it's passed, and then the topic can sign it, or whatever it's gonna be.
Pass our board.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'm trying to, now I make a motion to approve the contract as modified in paragraph one, to acknowledge it approved in the board, and as modified in paragraph two, that emergency would be declared by the county. I'll say it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. We'll get it as soon as we look at the end of time. I'll say it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along. Mesco update. My councilor, Neil, reward for setting through, we've had a long meeting, but I haven't seen it, we do like new dealings.
You did, you did. I'm very impressed, and I commend a lot of the staff and some of their work and stuff as well. There's a lot of information, I'm sure you all have seen some emails that have been passed along, so I won't get into a lot of that, because I'll, it's legal and economic, some issues we need to discuss later. But one thing you should have there is the summary of running span and where things do. And I gave you a handout, to Melissa, she's got that for you. And it was a PowerPoint presentation, Emily was supposed to do this today, she said we're booked, and I didn't want to ride with her.
And we did not want to see her.
I told her to stop. But this kind of, kind of breaks down a little bit of history of, I'm not gonna go into all of these numbers, because I think they're very immediate. We're all rants and things are good for it. But first page, of course, just mentions where the different money was coming from, and how many jobs were committed to each one of the funds. And of course, the CDVGPD funds, you've got fifty jobs, which is Gates' house, and that's one of the top of the city. We've already got the phase one funded, you can see there what the, what the budget amount, how much Gates has contributed, how much was reimbursed by CDVG. You know, even if it's no additional works were installed, you don't have to do any, any, any of those tax paybacks, as long as the fifty dollars are provided, because that's what the community did with the money that has been provided to the County that was booked, which doesn't include any of the other amounts. We haven't done any drawing at all. Of course, the deadlines on commitment of jobs are in May of 2016. And if the jobs are not free, if you, if you go forward, you're talking about paying back about seven thousand dollars for each job that's not free. And then on page two, which is kind of where we are now, we've got a current budget of about $2.1 billion. Gates' part of that, with the $339,967 after all of the grant money that's extended, that they can spend about $8,935,000, that's, that's a cross based on bill of duty. And you can see, the only one that's really in jeopardy, and I'll talk to you about compensation to the funding agencies as well later on, but is January 2, 2015. They seem to be the ones that's most anxious on the schedule. And it's a permanent related issue, so they have to be discussed. And of course, we'll get back to the questions of, what if we don't get paid through? You know, this is what the Gates County spent. You get $539,000, you're into it for, you know, matter of how many dollars plus the landlords that you send for options or whatever. And, and you have no additional capacity for the purchase of company car. But County still committed to the fifty dollars that you had to bring this $1,000 CDVG. So what, what they're really looking for, if we move forward with this thing, we need to find a suitable opportunity to provide this way in some way, pretty quickly, or at least let them know what the directions are headed. You'll have to spend the additional 230, this will come out of this, I say 230,000, this is coming out of Gates' part, minus the, you know, not yet, we're reimbursing for it, to locate that. And you're still committed to the other twenty jobs. So that's kind of where you are. And it's fine with you, this is the situation there, your information. So you just kind of say nothing to everything. Any questions? I'll, we'll have an answer.
You got it, Sandy. That was Sandy, isn't it?
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business. We're adding to new business. Budget amendments. Sandy?
There was, there was one budget amendment in the packet, and then there was another one that was added later through email, or it was on the table.
Should be numbers ten and eleven. Okay, um, will we do number ten?
Everybody have it, just to make sure.
I got one.
Okay. Number ten is to reallocate the funds to a full-time building inspector position that you all approved over the last month. We basically combine two part-time positions from two different departments and one full-time position in development services.
Okay, it's, it's just money from one category, one line item to another line item, do you not have a motion?
So move.
Motion's been made, second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay.
Okay, number eleven is to reallocate funds within the insurance lines. Every year, we estimate the insurance and the allocations and the costs, and then once we get through the billing and we do a workers' comp, I'll let it go back through, reallocated, and make sure the funds are where they need to be to cover the different departments. And that's what this amendment does. We had overestimated the amount it was going to go to DSS costs this year, so as we reduced that, we also had to reduce the state federal admin revenue line, because we've got reimbursement with that money. So that's why you see the change there. And then we've taken those decreased costs in insurance and used them to cover the miscellaneous emergency line for the governing body. We've had several expenses we weren't anticipating this year dealing with CDVG grant and also this Springs dead contract. So this will cover those expenses.
Okay, do I hear a motion? Or do you have questions, Sandy?
All the motion that we approved, the budget amendment, eleven, they presented.
Here, second.
Second.
Second motion to be made and seconded. Any further discussion? Now, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and all of them just did with us for quite a while, waiting for her turn. So always happy to see a brief.
Good afternoon.
Not anymore. Nice to be here.
So to receive federal funds, they require that we have Title VI compliance, so the states and around there, ideas or whatever, and I kind of tailored it to Gates County as a review. Currently, as far as translating documents to different languages, we don't have to do that because we don't meet the five percent criteria, we're under one percent of other non-English speaking, non-English proficient speaking persons. So the plan actually says a lot to not say anything. It talks about what we'll do if we meet that threshold, if we get to the five percent threshold, and we'll have to translate different documents, we have to translate all our brochures, all our files, all our information. And who we put in the paper, we have to translate, which we didn't have to do the last year because we didn't meet that threshold. Also, it also gives a complaint procedure for persons feeling that they were discriminated against. It has a complaint form for them to fill out, where they would go, where the plan would be, what they would have to do. And we're gonna set up an additional email address to come to, Title VI compliance, the Gates County, NC dot com, and please, and over the question, additional question.
As you know, as you pointed out, this is a second new, that has to be approved, and we're receiving state, I mean, several times. And as you pointed out, we've got a threshold right of where English is a second language. So what is the pleasure for?
This is policy. I did have one question. In the third paragraph on page three, where it says, "Once the complaint is received, GIPS will review it to determine if our office has jurisdiction. Complaint will receive an acknowledgement that are informing her slash him, whether the complaint will be investigated by our office." Do you need a certain number of days? Within fourteen days, or, I mean, or, because that, it just sounds like it just could stay there.
Overall, yes. But they're all complaints that receive no evidence, 180 days afterwards, and we have, I guess, ninety days to investigate. But you're saying to let them know whether we're going to acknowledge it?
Right.
Yeah, within the day.
Within fourteen, I'm, yeah. We'll receive acknowledgement later, when can they expect it, you know? Within fourteen days. I'm thinking, I think I found it somewhere, but that was my own confirmation. And then, no more, I'll make a motion that we approved its interregional transportation policy for Title VI, with the noted condition.
Okay, a motion is remade. I hear a second. Second, okay. Sterling, time frame, did you mention ten days?
Fourteen.
I'd like to just say business days.
Fourteen, business days. Okay. Well, that's for second December, so we're holidays. Okay, a, no, a motion is remade and seconded. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approval of the Gates County regional transportation system, Title VI plan with the corrections or additions, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Waited a long time for that. Okay, appointing citizens to the Admiral of Mission Plan Board and Board of Adjustments. Hopefully, you've seen on our website as well as in... Hopefully you've seen on our website as well as in the index that we have asked the people to to send applications. We have a number of appointments. Here we also have a sheet that the county manager has produced, Melissa actually sent I. First one is for the Admiral of Commission at large. This was Mr. Wesley Bloom, had been our person on the board, but he resigned due to health reasons in September. This is a non-elected representative that filled seat to the end of December of 2015. And we do have a person with an application that has applied and listed that one as his first choice. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'm chairman, I will make a motion, nomination and motion, that we appoint Timothy Williams to the Admiral of Commission, Board of Commission.
Okay, a motion has been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second has been heard, that we appoint Mr. Timothy Wiggins, Williams, excuse me, who lives in the Gates community and works at the Rivers Corrections Center. All those in favor of, any farther comments? All those in favor of appointing Mr. Williams to the Board of Admiral of Commission? Signified by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, and I'm sure that Melissa, you will send him a note telling him of his appointment. Okay, the second one is the Gates County Plan Board. Ray Freeman has resigned from that board. I have to be elected to the Board of Commissioners. We have this vacancy to fill. We have several applicants there. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'm very sorry to see Mr. Ray Freeman leave, but I will nominate Mr. William Franklin Salin to replace him.
Okay, a motion has been made to nominate William Salin. Does I hear a second?
Second.
Second, a motion has been made and seconded, that we nominate William Salin to fulfill the term of Ray Freeman. All those in L comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, you, once again, notify William Salin. We can only believe. To do that. The third appointment is for the Gates County Board of Adjustments. Is this a vacancy?
Yes, there's two spots. All of the residents who applied, we live in the Holly Grove, so we have to re-advertise for Middensfield. And it's believed to be for a two-year term or a three-year term, because one appointee was to have two, two years, and one was to have a three-year term.
Okay, the current board makeup is.
Supposed to be one from each of the townships.
Okay. Well, I will try to, if you wish, it's amended. To find one. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board? I didn't notice on one application the person worked at the shift yours, so I think it would be very difficult to attend meetings in the afternoon because that board meets in the afternoon current. So I think that might be a problem.
We just have to do one application?
No, no. We have two additional.
They're up there on your additional. Two came in, I believe Friday and Monday.
I mean, it could work on a night shift.
Well, I had not thought of that, Mr. Jordan. Do you know the name?
The name, is that Forsythe?
Yes, Forsythe.
I do not know.
They might be up in that other pile.
I'm thinking that he's, he's, uh, fine. If he has some discretion, I don't know if he's playing with his leaves or if he's working on a shift.
Well, I would nominate Foster Parrish.
Do you? I've got two copies.
Excuse me.
I nominate Foster Parrish, I do know him, I do know his involvement of activities.
Okay.
I seconded a nomination.
Okay, the Foster Parrish, he is currently, he's a member of the board, Chamber of Commerce. And also I assume that he, Josh, you know him?
I do know Mr. George, he served as a governor of the county.
Okay, so a motion has been made and seconded to appoint Foster Parrish to the Board of Justice. All those, is the board that nominated, say aye? All those opposed? Okay. And we'll keep the old on file because our old appointments could be coming up. Okay, we're moving along. Okay. Commissioners appointment to the E C B H Finance Committee and T A C. Okay. The Eastern Alliance Behavioral Health Finance Committee needs a commissioner, Mr. Jonathan Sir, who had numerous years on that board. And Mr. Freeman has volunteered. He has to have board approval, my ass.
I'll make a motion that Mr. Freeman, if he came over there, that position due to Almar, was the regional health, behavioral.
Second, second motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Freeman, you have a new job, just like you did in the old. We also have appointment to the T A C. And you saw the attachment.
I believe actually the attachment, whenever it was scanned in, got stuck elsewhere in the pile. Currently Commissioner Owens is on that committee. Are you willing to stay on that committee? They are needing, they have difficulty getting a quorum, meeting that I attended, and the way they thought they had a difficulty at the time before with the T A C, so they were asking every county to go back and ask their commissioners who are serving if they're still willing to serve.
Actually, I'm always willing. If they're having quorum issues, I could certainly cause that to be an issue with my schedule. And if we want to have representation there, I really, I hope that you folks will understand. I would recommend that we put somebody else on that committee, and I'm not trying to get out of something, I'll, if somebody wants to relinquish what they're currently doing. But the travel time for that.
They need quarterly by May, and they have already announced the meeting for January, that is in Curritah County. It starts at eleven o'clock.
Do I not remember, I hope I remember this correctly, that Mr. Owens is a board representative, but we can appoint someone else to be alternate for, if you cannot be there, that the alternate could vote for Gates County, but if Commissioner Owens was there, he would be the voting member. And so that Mr. Owens could stay on that board.
Now. That changes my, my comp.
Okay.
But at the same time, I'm trying to put pressure anywhere, but there are times when we need that vote.
And that would like us.
So if I agree to stay there, and want somebody to be able to go there. And the times have been passed, and John, just so you know, John went it quite a few times.
I'm on the T R C, I cannot be a county manager on the T A C board.
I know he sat, I know he sat in. No vote to prove, right, I understand what you're saying. But, yeah, I can, I can agree to do that.
Yeah, I have a law.
As long as I, as long as I have my, my board members in and out.
I did find the, it is, because the way it was printed, it printed in an odd location, but it, the message was that they are asking us to appoint an alternate as well. And if both attended, then you would be the, as the designated person from Gates County, you would cast a vote. If not, then the designated would be allowed to vote.
The alternate, is it required, or is that precedent of the commissioner, or are they all?
They got his, this is the manager of commissioners, yes.
Now, do we, can the board serve as my alternate?
Has been declared, yes. And I do have the meeting dates in this email as well. January twenty-first, April twenty-second, July twenty-second, and October twenty-first.
I'm glad the date is June.
I can send them out.
January the twenty-first and twenty-second, I'm going to be on two-day meeting.
I would prefer not to, I've got quite a few boards, and I've served them now, and it is, however. Still have to do it. Ray would do.
And I would have to check on the Admiral of Behavioral Science, now serving on, on the next day.
And when does this T A C meet?
They meet at eleven o'clock.
In the middle of the day?
Yes. At various locations, like I said, the one in January is in Curritah, they moved the location, meeting locations around.
I will take permission, George, and suggest. I'll make those a motion.
Okay, that we appoint Ray Freeman as an alternate to the T A C board. And you, Jack, if you can coordinate, I mean, if you account anybody, Jack. In a timely fashion.
But quarterly meeting.
Yes, sir, and I'll send you both the dates, and as soon as Angela, she will, I'll have her add both of you to the email address, and then if you'd like, I can resend it as well to make sure.
Okay, we had a motion, did we have a second?
Yes.
Second. All those in favor of appointing Ray Freeman as an alternate to the T A C boards, indicate by a saying. All those opposed? Okay. Well, oh, we never still have something, three more. Surplus request, if you look on the sheet where we had the list of, like, the surplus items to go to gov.deals.
Govdeals.com.
I knew that wasn't right. Govdeals.com. We have a number of surplus items. The first one is from the Register of Deeds. I think we probably do all of our equipment at one time, if you not agree.
I agree.
Or can we do them all at one time? Do you think that?
Everybody puts out their hands. Can you go to the register?
Can we do them all at one time?
You can.
Okay, the Register of Deeds has several items, printers, three types of printers. Solid Blaze has a dumpster, holler, and the general fund is not a surplus. A six-hundred gallon tar kettle. Whore has a two-hundred and seven pot water. DSS has office equipment. And County Ascension has the L C D projector and RCA call cam for. Do I have a question to place all these on govdeals.com?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, we, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? We will turn this over to the person in charge. Surplus to give on gov.deals.com. Okay. Extension direct, no, application for E I C block grant.
Leave us with an email in December to everyone notifying you that Economic Improvement Council has submitted an application for the Community Services Block Grant Program fiscal year July first, two thousand and fifteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. It's for family self-sufficiency in the amount two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. This is the reason I did not send it to you, is because of the amount that it has been here since the beginning, or middle of December for review. The, I've spoken with Ms. White, who is actually the person who has written the application and submitting it, because I, from a county manager perspective, had some questions about some of the information that was provided in here. For example, and I will share this, it says that Robert White is listed under public elected officials as a county commissioner, and she said that whenever we were asked to submit a name, it was under the county commissioners, but it did not have to be a county commissioner. And I told her that that was not the way it was presented. Whenever I was contacted by Dr. Mason, who was the executive director, that I was just told that we needed to reappoint someone, and that was who they recommended, and that Mr. White was willing to serve. That was just a concern I personally had, because it does appear to me that he's listed as a county commissioner. I also noted that the dates were wrong for his term, and I did point that out as well. One of the big concerns I had, and I addressed with Ms. White, was that there were supposed to be two public hearings held for this grant. I did not find documentation in this application of either one being advertised in Gates County, but there is a sign-up sheet there evidently was, one meeting on December the eighth, two people attended, one was E I C board member from Gates County, and the other was the E I C employee. Ms. White's response to me was that you did not have to advertise for a public hearing, and only one hearing was actually held. Those were just two of my concerns that I had that were, as it related to Gates County. According to Ms. White, we are basically required, they are basically required to submit this to the county. The county just has to review it and sign off on it. They will not be making any changes to it, but if we do have comments, we can provide comments if there are concerns about this application. They will be serving five people in Gates County.
I, I.
This is something we've never looked at, never seen, and we're asking for.
Yes, and as I stated, I sent this in an email back in December, once we received it, to let you know that it was in the office.
Oh, that was stopped by the office?
Yes, because of, it was not, they did not send it electronically, and this is the way it was submitted to us.
I did call the E I C, I talked with them about it. I don't have a problem. I did, personally, call the E I C, it's basically the standard grant application that they submit every year, two years, in whatever cycle. I understand that the funds are something like two or a thousand dollars less this year, or somewhere in that area, and what they normally receive is something that we normally get. So, I'm sure that I would make a motion that we approve submission of the E I C grant application for the current question here.
Okay, a motion has been made to approve. Do I hear a second? Okay, a second has made, been made, any other comments? I will just say that I noticed in the daily advance, there were advertisements in all counties of, of E I C. There was never an advertisement in the Gates County. There was never an advertisement in the Gates County index. And I really do think that was not, I think we should be treated, I mean, it should have been the same process in our county, that the public announcement should have been done. That kind of follows, I mean, you know, when I saw the papers for the all counties in our area, and the Chawan paper, you know, and Chawan and the Riverous was. And I do think sometimes, you know, that the charts would show the officials, they should be elected officials. But I guess that's a high point, but if you're elected official, you're elected official. If you're not elected official, you should be listed on that chart, you should be listed as, on the old chart with the, even though he's our representative. But anyway, that's just my comments, obviously, I had concerns with it.
You also include those comments in our response.
And I, yeah, I do think, you know, sometimes I think we're forgotten ones. You know, I know we're small, we're rural, and maybe off the beaten path, but I really do think it should be treated as all, the all counties, the past counties, Chawan, Curta, that same procedure should file for us. And, yeah, I would like those comments to be included in our. Okay. I'll get off my band, because band pops tonight. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, if not, all those in support of giving approval to the EIC contract. Signified by saying aye for the block grant. All those opposed? Okay, pass, comments to be included.
If I may, I would like to ask Dr. Mason to come and give presentation. He is the new executive director at EIC, I believe he started in August. That way he can explain what he is doing, or any changes that might even take place over there, and we can put a name with a face.
Well, I think it'd be nice so that we're all aware of the services that they are providing and.
And introduce.
And, and, and introduce us to him. May that be a good idea. Okay, budget, extension director hiring.
I met with Dr. Travis Burke last week in regards to hiring an extension director for Gates County. They, just as a reminder before we get further in the conversation, effective July first of two thousand fifteen, Gates County will be required to pay fifty percent of one county support staff person within that office. And if the county wishes to keep a second person, then we will be required to pay one hundred percent of that funding. What Dr. Burke and I discussed was there was a need for an extension director to be placed into Gates County. He shared that several counties around us have new directors, or they will be going out, I believe shortly, and that several of the county directors are serving multiple counties as county director. So at this time, Gates County doesn't even have a true interim county director. VJ has been taking care of a lot of the responsibilities, including filling out purchase orders and such with Travis's approval and signature on it. So he would like to go ahead and advertise for this position. What he has requested is that the commissioners consider funding this position at fifty percent effective upon hire of a new person, instead of waiting until the required date of July first, two thousand sixteen. Because as of July first, two thousand sixteen, we will be required to pay fifty percent of salaries for the agricultural agent, and four H agent, and the CED, and then thirty-four percent for the family consumer science agent. Or, and then fifty percent for any of the shared agents that we currently have in the county that we share with, for Quinones, and that we share with Chawan County. What Dr. Burke shared is that the advertised starting salary for the CED is fifty thousand dollars. What I have given you is some information, if you look at the chart, that looks like this. This was used to determine this year's budget, and it was laid out this morning, I handed it out this morning.
Well, I've already lost that again.
I have highlighted the past, current, past cooperative extension director salary, and what position, percentage, excuse me, that we paid, as well as the two supportive staff positions. And as I said, this is for this year's budget. On the next page was the pension benefit rate from the state, that's on the back of the, of that one that was highlighted. This came from the state again, that was used for this year's budget, that told all of the insurance rate, retirement rate, FICA, et cetera. The, the last sheet are numbers that I came up with, and these, please note that these are estimates. And they are estimated salaries. The, the main thing I would like for you to look over is the CED, the first blocks, where it says if we paid at fifty percent, what it would cost the county versus if we paid it for the next year, a couple of months, at what we currently pay at thirty-one point twenty-five percent. Then you have one of the supportive staffs, if we paid them at fifty percent effective July first, an estimated total of how much it would cost, and this was estimating the insurance at four hundred and eighty dollars a month, which is an increase over what it was for this current fiscal year. And then the last, that is not in a box, is what it would cost if we kept the second support staff effective July first at one hundred percent. And that grand total was everyone at fifty percent as of July first, if the new CED was hired in at fifty thousand dollars. Because we are required to pay fifty percent of insurance, FICA, retirement, workers' comp, and UI.
So, July twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen, maybe?
Correct.
Sixteen.
Correct. So we will be mandated to pay fifty percent of the CED, four H, and the acquisition, as well as the shared position.
And he wants us to, he's actually asking us to submit as of when?
As of, as soon as they hire someone, which could be April, since it's January that the state advertises and hires, it could be March, April, May, or it could be July first. He is hoping to get someone here as soon as possible.
Right, but he's most likely asking us to do it a year in advance.
Correct. Or more than a year in advance.
No, the C, I'm sorry, the CED position would be effective in March, is that not two thousand fifteen?
No, that's just the secretary. But he's asking us to go ahead and pick up the fifty percent as soon as this person is hired.
What, what, what is the benefit, or what is, is this, is this, of us wanting to do that?
For the county, the same, um. There is none?
Except.
For this state, it saves the state money. Because you are looking, you know, like I said, we have to consider during budget discussions that fifty percent for one secretary, and then the status of the second secretary, that's over there.
We can already approve our budget up until July twenty fifteen. And actually, we can, uh, our budget for, for twenty sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, we have to.
Mary.
Mary. Personally, I, I think the current rate for the CED, and I think we could go ahead with current funding for the other two.
Well, the other two were just for your information right then. Because that's, to get, what him give you a preview of what's coming during budget discussions. But we do need to make a decision on the CED today, so that I can let you know.
I think, I think we, saying directly here, the opposition is, is important enough. I don't think we go ahead and fund it, make that motion.
I don't know what percentage.
I would, my motion would be at the current, thirty-one, four, two, five, six.
Well, then we have saved some money, because we haven't had one for a couple of months. So it should not have caused us any budgetary problems.
No, it has not.
Okay, Mr. Jordan has, Commissioner Jordan has a motion that we fund the approved or funding of a new CED at the current level of thirty-one point twenty-five percent. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Second has been duly noted. Any discussion?
This is if, if and when one is hired.
If and when one is hired, and it, of course, now if it's hired after July first, it would be in the new. New budget. But it would still be at the thirty-one point twenty-five percent. Correct. And I know that in extension, that we do have cooperative agreements between counties, because I see business, you work back there, I know she works in Gates and Chawan. Do you have a third? Have acquaintance, so that you rotate a run, and I know we do that with some of the old people in, and I guess their salaries are split.
That would be one that we would, I'm just going to use hers as an example, we would pay fifty percent. She would work in, in all three counties. For Quinones would pick up, I'm, I'm just going to use Mr. Harold as the example, for all three counties, and then fifty percent would be picked up from Chawan for Kenny Shook's position, for all three counties.
Okay, and then all two counties would pay, okay.
And then the other fifty percent is paid by state.
Fifty percent is paid by state, so we get really three individuals, and we're doing. Okay, but that didn't help with the, the director. Okay, a motion is on the table, that we current agree to have the CED rated current thirty-one point twenty-five percent. Any, of discussion? Okay. All, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you. No, we'll call, we'll probably, we're going to call him white.
Okay, moving on. We do have comments, citizen comments, and then we've added to, Mr. Rankin?
Well, I can assure all of you that when I left home this morning, that I didn't know I was going to feed you this long. And my blood sugar was getting out of the way, and that means my brain, which ain't covered too good anyway, so I didn't bring no apple with me, Jack, and I got this little piece of paper here that I got to get, it's very addressed on. But real quick, now, now that I'm the last one on the program for you, and this guy's got, he, him and, well, Pitt spends a lot of his life sitting up here, and he's got, I don't know what he thinks about it in court when he's waiting his turn, but I mean, that's part of, he usually sits down here, don't you, Pitt? That's, that's his chair there, that's a goblin chair. Anyway, real quick, I just wanted to share something light with you before I get into something serious. Is Jack and Hendrick both know, they're the oldest ones on the board, but Kenny, I don't mean age-wise, you know I'm on that, Jack.
I think that's fine.
Yeah, I'm not even going to mention Linda, but anyway, on the board. Know that Kenny Jerenkin and I always had this little thing going on about me retiring from politics. Well, I actually got Kenny Jerenkin to laugh when they on the phone. I thought he was going to smile, but I couldn't see it, but he actually laughed. Lady in Elizabeth City, Miss Beech, she told me during the elections about every day, emailed me every day, in constant contact. And so after the elections over, within one or two days, I didn't hear from her, and she called me up to ask me a question, and I said, I said, "Well, I'm not really going to say anything." I said, "I have retired." I said, "I've already made that announcement to the county commissioners." She said, she calls me Earl Ramtree, she says, "Earl Ramtree," she says, "I'm going to put on the back of your tombstone when you die." Today, Earl Ramtree retired. Well, I thought I had one a little bit better than that. My ten-year-old grandson, another lady over there, that I was in constant contact, political advocates, advocate, and she emailed me last week, I guess it was, I saw her last Friday. And then she'd emailed me, and I told her, I said, "Look," I said, "I have retired from politics." And I said, "I'm just," I said, "The reason I'm doing this is a fact, is I'm like Lou Garrett and other people." I said, "I want to retire at the head of the game, because I have been fighting and fighting and fighting in this area and in Gates County for so long, for the conservative cause, and everybody I voted for, and everybody I gave money to won, and that'll never happen again." Well, I had told her this, well, my ten-year-old grandson wanted to know something, and this letter, email was on the computer screen, and he wanted to know something, so he always goes in there and looks it up, and he goes in there and he reads the email. He comes back in, and he says to me, said seriously to me, he says, "Granddaddy," he says, "You're going to quit politics when you quit eating." And he said, "That myth is going to happen about ten days after you die." Well, Jennifer Batiste back here, she's staying in here, this is something I think we need to look at. I asked Jennifer if she would stay, there's nothing to be acted on at all today, and I don't even know about our ordinance, but it had come up in Carrington County last year. They had a problem because, and there's only an ordinance and development ordinance, they didn't have anything to deal with shooting ranges. And so it caused a lot of confusion and controversy, and meetings after meetings trying to come up, to satisfy everybody on a shooting range. Now, we may never have an application, uh, rate for a shooting range in Gates County. You haven't been on the planning board, and also a gun owner, and shoot, I just point that to you. But I think that I will request and see if y'all will agree to the planning board to look at the regulations for a shooting range, so that we have it in place, so when somebody does come in. And the NRA has a book, and I saw the book, it's a real big book of recommendations. The NRA will tell you, and this is what Carrington model theirs was after the National Rifle Association. But what happened in Carrington was, is that's something they overlooked. They had all these, all these regulations, and somebody comes in, wants to put up a shooting range. And so I, I hope y'all will agree, or the planning board will look at this, and about the shooting ranges. The other thing that I wanted to say, that I was going to get on this, and I was very interested, y'all did a great job today, honestly. You know me, I'm, that's the reason I don't want to be appointed to nothing, elected to nothing, because that way I can say like I feel. But I think really y'all all did a good job today, you didn't agree on everything. There were some motions didn't get a second, and quite frankly, they didn't need a second. But in my opinion, in my opinion, but y'all did do a great job today, and I think we got a pretty good board, and Jack, you brought up a lot of good points, and all of you did. But that Indian thing was something that really ran around, and you know, I study y'all's faces. I guess maybe you know, in your little comments, and study your faces, and I, I noticed that y'all weren't really comfortable with this, and I, and I agree with you, you don't, we don't know, and I think the question was asked, well, where are we going with this? Well, the Lumbees, and that's what I call them, Lumbees, they have been trying to be recognized for a long time. And I was at a fundraiser for Senator, I mean Congressman Waldo Jones, a few years ago down in Bethlehem, North Carolina, and this big Lumbee delegation showed up. And this big Lumbee delegation showed up. Well, Congressman Jones and I were hiding in the kitchen drinking wine. It wasn't because we were hiding because we were drinking wine, but he didn't really want to be confronted with them because they are constantly trying to be recognized. Well, the number one reason, basically, this all started is that Lumbees, if they could get recognized and find a reservation down there in Cumberland County on I-95 and get a casino like the Cherokee's, they want none of them to have to work again. And it's not a rumor, it's a fact, that he brought up about the Cherokee's. Well, I, literally, I'm not an expert on any of this. I did spend some time with the Cherokee's this summer and asked a lot of questions, not had anything to do with this. But one question I asked, I said, "I've always heard," I hadn't figured, I didn't bring them, "that casino out there brings in just millions of dollars." Well, they got a ten-story motel that runs over in the weekends. Uh, and it just brings in millions of dollars. And so one morning, the waitress there was feeding me breakfast, and, uh, she was like a full-blooded Cherokee. And I said to her, I said, "Do you get money from that casino?" And she said, "Yes." She, she told me she got $2,800 a year for herself because she was a Cherokee. So this thing is just amazing. So you can see that when you're dealing with this situation, uh, people are out here trying to be Cherokee's now. And he mentioned, I caught that in my mind. He said, "A lot of people say that they are Cherokee's." Well, I don't know whether, and that's part of the reason. They're trying to prove it so they can get some money. But I, I don't, one way or the other, but y'all, I was real, felt good about the fact that y'all then just jumped right into something. The other thing that I wanted to mention to you, and I know y'all get a lot of information out through the County Commissioner Association. Uh, but if you had, if you picked up on this, there is a move, and I think it's really being pushed by the government, is to redistribute the sales tax. And I know maybe y'all heard a little bit about this. The problem is is whether or not it's ever going to be passed because why would the people and representatives and senators of Wake County, Gilbert County, Forsyth County, even Ruane County want to give us sales tax money? Because we as human beings are greedy, and also we have to look after our constituents. But it is being pushed, and it would be a, a great thing for us. Now, the reason I say all of this is I think it gives individual, and all of you, especially Linda is chairman, maybe Jack's a great salesman. Uh, he can find time and get away to lobby for this. But here's the key. And I was speaking with a social event the other night with Mayor, uh, Mayor Joe Beal of Elizabeth City. And I knew Joe was going to be, you know, he wants everything in Elizabeth City, that's his job. But the money that goes to Elizabeth City, a lot of that is, I mean, that's the argument, that's the only argument we really got. But it's a good argument to every representative and senator we got in Raleigh is that little counties like us and Turrell and Hyde that spend our money somewhere else, that is our money. And so somewhat should come back. But if we get opportunity to, uh, do in the lobby up there or somewhere to see if we can, and this thing has been moving along with the sales tax. Also, I was told by a reliable source, uh, this was, yeah, Monday, from another county that keeps up with a lot, that as I speak probably, there are people in the Sandy Left, and it really don't make much difference. But there are a group in Raleigh that are getting together the fund balances for every county and every city and school boards in the state. Now, when you start thinking about this, we're talking about, I guess, billions of dollars. I don't know how much it would add up. And what is going to happen, and don't make any difference how my politics, your politics, but we got to watch, is the state is going possibly, and this is the reason it's being done, and the legislature is going to say, "Well, we don't need to give these counties any money because they got X number of billion dollars sitting in the bank anyway." Just thought I'd mention that is happening. We got to keep our eyes on that, uh, about our fund balance. Now, my question, and what's going to be decided, was does anybody know how many months of fund balance we have now? I mean, I don't mean embarrassing it, but. I know Carrickup has got three months. And the reason they got, they told me that they do that is because they're coastal county, and we all brought up about FEMA and stuff today. Uh, but if we have a...
Eleven.
Huh?
I would say ours is eleven.
We would have to have a, in order of us to wait for government to come in here, we can't sit back and be like Chris Christie and, you know, and say, "We're not getting the money, we got to keep operating." And, uh, but that's just something that people are all about. What I want from you today, and maybe just simple, I don't know if it's got to be a vote. It was brought to my, well, actually, this is my personal experience that brought this. And then when I talked to other people, something happened so strange. You ever have things that happen so strange in your life and wonder how it happened? I called Mike Cox, and I'm going to digress one before I forget it. Everybody, we got a great county manager. And the reason that there's a lot of good things about her. Well, one thing is that her previous life, she knows a lot of people. And when the other county managers we had, they wouldn't talk to other people, and other people didn't know them. But everywhere I go, they use the word "nabber." And you know, that means they know them, right? So anyway, I was talking to the attorney for Pastor Dan and Mike Cox about a peddling ordinance, a peddler's ordinance, a solicitation ordinance. And he said, "Well, it's funny you called me because I'm sitting here reading this on my desk right now because we're running some problems, I had to change it." So anyway, um, I have sent that out to a couple of y'all. That's the Pastor Dan's. Now, Carrickup has got a more, another one, which any of you can get, but I talked, uh, Lynn Watson, or Walter, Lynn Walter, the clerk to the board over there, that's a Cindy woman, but Natalie, anybody can call her. Carrickup did as last year, and they call it a peddler's ordinance. But the whole point of this thing is goes a little bit back to the hurricanes, but it also goes more back to that. I was talking to Valerie Tripp, I thought that thing's falling into place. Now, I had no idea in the world, I was coming in today talking about a peddler's ordinance. And I'm going to speak to her, but I haven't seen her since way before Christmas. And, uh, she brought it up. And what her concern was, and I said, "That is disappointing, I didn't think of that." When we have a natural disaster, a hurricane, a tornado, you get people gravitating, Jack, and you know this, you've been around. All of you know this. Coming in to take advantage of people. And we need to look at a peddler's ordinance. Now, my personal experience dealing with these gypsies, and I call them gypsies, they're not true gypsies. I'm married to a true gypsy. I can tell you about that, but, um, I won't. But, um, Jack wants to hear this story later. But anyway, then I call them gypsies, so they, all of them come from South Carolina and they do painting. Well, some of them do a fair job on bands and rooftops, you know, they get room and stuff, they spray paint everywhere, but they do a pretty good job. I was over there waiting to take my way to the doctor, and a guy stopped me, well, the shelves doctor was in bad shape. And, um, and it shouldn't have been. And he sat there and he done, I tell you right now, Ray Freeman, he done the best job of selling I have ever seen in my life. He was so good. He was better than Jack Owens. And I went ahead and painted him, and in about two months, less than two months' time, the rust is coming through. But, and they, they come around, "Well, yesterday, one of those guys showed up at my house." He's a little guy. "There's nobody in here that small." And, uh, he shows up, and I looked at him, I said, "You want," and I, I don't know why he was down here. I said, "You one of them gypsies?" I said, "You want to paint my room?" I said, "Let me tell you about that." So I jumped all over him. But he says, but he kept right on silent. I said, "I'm going in the house, I'll be right back." He said, "Don't you come out here with a gun and shoot me." I said, "I'm not going to bring my gun out." I said, "No bigger than you are, I'm old, I can still kick your butt." Well, he stood there and, and all. But, uh, I enjoyed telling him, I felt good. But I think that we need to look at this as something that we have a lot. I know Hendrick, when he's chairman, he puts through some things that, you know, and with y'all's help, on grass cutting, and who else we do, Hendrick? Noris ordinance, uh, ordinance. And we got the county attorney over here. We can, you can do anything you want to an ordinance. Now, that ordinance is law until the court tells you it's unlawful. So y'all can write anything you want, until the court tells you it's not. But we have, I think that we need to have some way to check on these things. It's like Valerie said, if we have a hurricane, a tornado, and somebody calls up and says, "Is this guy arrested?" You know, Engage County. Uh, "Does he have a business address, a true business address?" It's something to think about. I'd like to ask, but you may be asking Natalie to work on this and see if y'all talk about with it in the future. But I do think it's needed. I appreciate your support, and I would each a distance.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ryanker, you're always entertaining.
I don't know about that.
But, um, I, we certainly can ask, I don't know, I think it'd be planning board maybe.
I believe the sheriff, I'll talk with the sheriff. He, I believe they already have something in place, we can check on that.
Okay, we need to check into that. Because I do remember after, it was Isabelle and Burke, and we had a lot of people who were in roofing.
Tree removal.
And tree removal, and some were not, uh, they're not doing the job that they were supposed to do. So, yeah, I do think we need safeguard citizens.
County has a peddler's license permit program that come through. I'm the one that issues it, and I go back down, you personally request without question.
Okay, thank you. And is that well known that you have to go to the insurance office?
Yes, ma'am. That's what we did, and that team due to factor to hurricanes when people start coming in to do work and everything.
Well, believe it or not, we're almost to the end of public section of the Board of Commissioners. Uh, we have the Commissioner's comments. Um, I believe we'll start at the end of the table with Mr. Commissioner Freeman, and...
Well, thank you, Madam Chairman. Appreciate that. Of course, we appreciate all the citizens that have been here today. But our interest and my interest, of course, is for a good Engage County. Thank you for being here.
I too appreciate it. We've had a long day, a whole lot of information has been given. And just appreciate y'all staying by. And I always, when I look out here and see a wardens department, the rescue squad, the sheriff's department, it's very good to see everybody represented out here. Thank you.
I do thank everyone for coming and everyone staying. And for those who left, I appreciate the interest that you have in the county government because a lot of the decisions that we make are very important to all of our citizens. We just want you to be aware of what's happening and what's going to affect each and every one of our citizens. So thank you for coming and thank you for supporting us. And have a great new year.
Well, I'd like to start off by thanking my fellow board members for their input today and for a good, lively debate. It's we, possibly, I think we always come up with the best solution when we all participate in that. And thank our citizens and our department people and our employees for being here.
I do like to thank you for coming and, um, listening and sharing your thoughts with us. That's always important to us, to give citizens comments. I do thank you, saw that we all tried to do our due diligence today. Uh, we come from different backgrounds and have different opinions, but we all are interested in what is best for Engage County. And we hope, I think today, we have tried to find common brains so that we can move forward, uh, together as a county. And we thank you for coming. Okay, now we will, uh, probably need to take a break, don't you think, before we go into closed session? Okay. Okay, do I hear a motion to move into closed session?
So move.
Oh, I need to read the sentence, I'm sorry. Okay, um, in pursuit... Right there. Okay. Uh, we need to enter to close session pursuant to NC General Statute 143-31811 concerning legal, economic development, real estate, and personnel matters.
So move. So.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we want to take a five-minute break, and we'll be back here for the closing. Okay, do I have the motion to come on a closed session?
So move. Say.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, um... If we will kind of have some motions made concerning activities done during closed session?
Chairman, uh, I make a motion that we authorize our county attorney to contact the mayor and request an option before we begin it that we discuss in closed session.
Okay, a motion has been made, and we have a second?
Second.
Second. Um, did we, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion is approved. Um, second motion?
I'd like to make a mo... Go ahead. I'd like to make a motion that the sheriff's office via Sheriff Webb be allowed to move a vehicle and sell it and trade, uh, for usage of sheriff's power.
Okay. Second, a motion has been made, and second, to permit the sheriff to trade in a vehicle for a null vehicle. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And our third act, action of business?
Yeah, I'm chair. I move that we instruct our county manager to draft a letter on the matter that we discussed in closed session to be reviewed by our attorney before sending it.
Okay, a motion has been made, second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that carries. Well, this American meeting is, uh, we will recess until January the twentieth, uh, 2015. Thank you for your diligence and patience, and have a nice evening.